Called the meeting to order for the record. It is Tuesday, the 24th of August at 4:30 p.m. We'll begin today's City Council work session, joint meeting with the City Development Corporation, with full call attendance for the city emergency.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Councilman Cavanagh.
Here.
Councilwoman Perrow.
Here.
Councilman Strater.
Yes.
Councilman Hoagland.
Here.
Councilman Byrne. Mayor Zimison.
Here.
For Emirate, City Development Corporation, full call. Mr. Winter. Mr. Mueller.
Here.
Mr. Glassick. Mr. Baslow. Mr. DeBeard. Mr. McCarville. Mr. Beckett, Bevan. Mr. Byrne. Okay. Mr. Fitzgerald.
Here.
All right. Well, with that, we will go on to our adoption of the agenda. Mr. Mayor. Councilman Byrne.
Move that we adopt the agenda is published.
Second motion, second to adopt the agenda. Not in favor, signed by Sanai.
Aye.
Aye.
Let's have it. The agenda is adopted. First item up, discussion items. Number one, draft urban renewal plan for the Northern Gateway Urban Renewal Project. Over to Cameron.
Mr. Mayor, members of council and members of the MDC Board, it's good to be with you. It's time, time to start talking a little bit more about the details of the plans, some of the revenue, our whole plan, as well as specific block urban renewal plan. And that's really the purpose of the discussion case, that you guys can give a really good update of where we are in the process, give you a little bit more meat on the bone as to the plans themselves, some of the projects that we've identified within those, cover our projects as well. Also talk about the numbers. Really gather any feedback you have. This is councils and the boards' opportunity to provide us and staff that feedback to keep these plans in place and continue to move forward. That really is kind of the game plan for today. So we'll start with the Northern Gateway. Real quick, just to orient you, right here a little bit, I really wanted to talk through the purpose of this plan. You know, this, as you know, is a, is a kind of a part of, part of town that continues to need a little additional attention, and therefore, the purpose of this plan is to focus those efforts towards forward. We really do take a hard look at transportation elements in particular. More than anything, it's to make it a table. And then just this last bullet, using, really using MVC's destination downtown as a foundation. Modernize it, look at where our areas on in the past, you know, so much. Wanted to kind of give you just a street's pay view, some of this on the far right, hard to see here, hopefully you can see it more in your packet, but some of the areas that you've identified, and I think this is probably a good place to maybe turn it down, if you wanted to kind of.
Thanks, Cameron. Yeah, Don Costalek with the Trivium Planning here in Boise, been working in tandem with Ash Student Staff, as well as meeting, and thank you, Kristy Little and Tom Laws at ACHD, to think through some of the street stuff and your utilities department. And as Cameron said in that last bullet, we wanted to take the plans that had been done, not just, you had done some downtown cross-section plans to complement the comp plan and downtown effort, you have a large CIP and projections for your utility projects. And then ACHD, about a decade ago, did a downtown Meridian pedestrian and bicycle plan. They are starting to update those about every 10 years, so you'll be due for a refreshing of that, and they've changed some street design concepts and things since then. So it was an opportunity to talk with them about those projects. They are starting a design of sidewalks on Second and a Half and Third Streets, both in this area and to the south of Franklin, that'll be coming on board in the 2024, 2025 range, so it was good to discuss that part with them and, and talk about those. If we want to go to the next slide, this is the more detailed map from your utilities department of what they're planning in that area. And so in general, the blue line is a water main, the green line is wastewater, and really the, the big red L up on Fairview is a major CIP project. Those were the really major underground utility projects for this. But what they also wanted to see was those yellow lines on that map are the utility lines that run on the back property lines and through alleys of parcels, which are both a maintenance burden, but also can limit the consolidation of parcels, so the more the funds from the agency can help move those utilities out of those alley locations and under the streets, A, easier for you to maintain, B, less public right-of-way, mainly for ACHD, and, and C, greater opportunities for redevelopment, because you don't have this parceling out of parcels with that kind of stuff. So the utility elements that are in there mainly reflect those improvements. When we get above the street level, and if you can go to the next slide, just a couple examples, as Cameron said, this area kind of needs a little bit of love, and we look at those as kind of what finishing the street would mean, and essentially calling that an urban cross-section. So to the best extent possible, the slide that showed the street cross-section, we tried to base the cost estimates on those. But as you'll see in the bottom-left one, you know, you have some new townhomes there on Fourth Street, and to get all that in and the sidewalks there, you know, the things like the tree buffers and other parts just weren't attainable. We're not saying go in there, rip those out, and build something new. In the top one, though, however, if we look at the sidewalks in front of Coal Valley, and we all know that the future there is, is predicated a lot on their plans and master plans, but those are the types of sidewalks that probably need to be replaced, and if you're redeveloping those parcels, that's where you would get those sidewalk buffers. And as you see in the top-right slide, just Second and a Half looking north, really a street that's incomplete, and a discussion with ACHD that I think, once you get through this process, will be, you know, do we, do they put sidewalks on one side at this stage, waiting for redevelopment on the west side to get something functional? But that's a conversation you'll need to have with them, and they're prepared to have as you go through this process. Want to go to the next slide, Cameron. Really, the, you know, the streets, the primary arterials like Main and Meridian Road and Fairview and Cherry, for the most part are kind of constructed. But this is an example, especially in that northeast parcel of Meridian Road and Cherry with the Albertsons, as well as the northwest parcel. You've got the Bud Porter Pathway that comes in north of there and kind of cuts across. ACHD has recently changed their roadway cross-sections, no longer build the traditional bike lane within the curb confines and do a pathway pipe segment. So that'd be the type of thing that, if you were to get redevelopment of that main Albertson's parcel, to then look to get more of a buffered pathway to make that L-shaped connection, and link your pathway system to the land use and things that were. So in terms of these streets where it's already that curb gutter sidewalk and finished look, that's the only thing we really tossed it out, has a change there. Something like Main Street, there's just not a lot to change in its current configuration. And that's just a little bit of how we develop those. And if you want to go to the next slide, this is our, careful to say, planning-level cost estimates. If you've been on any of your boards approving bids lately, you know that cost estimates might as well be written on an Etch A Sketch. So we used estimates that both from your bidding, from work the utilities department was doing, as well as working closely with CCDC, just to see how they were estimating just linear footage for a local street, a collector's street, sidewalks, street lighting and other things that would go into that. And you'll see with that, we put a pretty good contingency on top of those, just to account for those things. Where you see the higher numbers per project are generally where you also have a utility project planned, so almost just as much going on under the ground as above the ground. But the total linear feet of the roads in that boundary are about three miles, a little less than three miles and 15,000 linear feet. So again, that was just our philosophy and background in coming up with those estimates for the capital project we've been proposing.
Thank you, Don. Appreciate that. So wanted to turn just a little time to our legal advice, Megan, who helped us draft the plan for this area, goes out with Phil, who helped. Sorry.
All right. Well, thank you for having us here today, and I think this is a great next step in our process in moving both of these initiatives forward, so thank you for your time. First before you is the Northern Gateway Plan, and I believe that, actually, there was a packet of documents circulated, correct? So you do have what is considered to be a full or complete draft of that document. It is in draft form, there are draft being notes, there are some highlighted provisions, and there are some things that will be changed as a result of this meeting. There is a photo, let's see, Cameron, do you know if this presentation is uploaded at all?
Do you have?
I'll move forward. You all are pretty familiar with the boundaries of the proposed Northern Gateway area. The D, there's a significant portion that was D annex from your existing downtown area, plus there are a few parcels that are north of Meridian, Fairview, and west and east of Meridian Road, including a 17-acre parcel that's currently an unincorporated Ada County. So when we look at initiating an urban renewal plan, we first start with what are the plan elements? And those are outlined in Idaho Code 502905. And that provides a pretty good roadmap as to what our next steps are and what we need to include within the confines of that document. The first, and I will just hit these really quickly, because I know you all have been through this planning process before, but I have highlighted where in the planning document itself you can find where we have met these plan elements. The first is a statutory requirement that a statement describing the total assessed value of the combined base assessment rolls cannot exceed 10% of the total taxable value of the city. So what we do in calculating that is we take all of the existing revenue allocation areas, look at their adjusted base assessment rolls, add in the projected base assessment for the proposed project area and the proposed amended area, that cannot exceed 10% of your total taxable value. That formula has been run, and you have a significant amount of capacity left. I think you're in about the 3% range. For purposes of planning, we did use the 2020 certified values. We do recognize there has been a significant increase in those values in 2021. However, even with a significant increase, that is not going to change the 10% analysis. You still are going to fall well within that keyway there. The second, and that specifically is found in Section 502.3. The second requirement is a statement listing the kind, number, and location of all proposed public works or improvements within the revenue allocation area. Thank you. And then that is in Section 800. And then finally, the description of the disposition of assets upon termination. In general, if you don't have a revenue stream beyond revenue allocation proceeds, you're not able to retain real property assets. And so there is a provision in the plan that typically addresses the disposition of those assets to the city upon termination, or if there's a better public entity to have those assets at that time the determination is made. Another qualification in the plan is that when you have a parcel that has been used for an ag operation within the last three years, the property owner has to provide consent to be included within the dis. In this case, in this project area, there is a 17-acre parcel that is, had, I believe, an ag exemption on it, or for sure has been used as an agricultural operation. Ag operation under the statute is a defined term, and it's very broad. It doesn't take much to fall within that ambit. So that consent has been obtained for that specific parcel. And next slide, Cameron. So in determining the projects and the project list, the Trivium Planning formed the basis of a wealth of information that informed Attachment 5. There's also the city's comprehensive plan, destination downtown, conversations with property owners and developers, and as well as city and MVC staff. So data came from all sources. And then I think next, we're getting into Phil's Attachment 5.
Thank you, Megan. Again, those of us who've been through this before, you can kind of recognize the approach that we take here. And the first thing that I have done is try to forecast what the revenue allocation revenue will be over the life of the district. And in doing so, you have to make a lot of assumptions, because I really don't know at this point what it's going to look like 20 years hence. And so what we have done is tried to forecast what's going to happen to property values in the area absent anything else occurring. And so we basically looked at what's happened in the community over the last 10 years, and then kind of took a look at that and then basically increased what we'd traditionally been looking at for a growth figure, and checking off what has occurred here. So what we've done is looking at land values escalating at an 8% per year pace, and improvement values escalating at 10% per year. That's, again, given what's gone on here in the last five or 10 years, that's fairly meager assumption at this point. But as you're looking 20 years into the future, recognizing dips and so forth in the world of real estate, we thought having that fairly robust amount of, of growth assumed going forward is probably unwise in a conservative revenue estimating scenario. And so after five years, we reduced that by about half of that. So we're looking at beyond that five-year period, 4% on land and 5% on property. And so we've got that spreadsheet there that shows what basically happens to your valuation over the 20-year period of the plan. Then we assume that something's going to happen out there, somebody's going to build something. So we plugged in a number of fairly significant taxable investments over time, which are not all going to happen at once, we kind of schedule it over a number of years, and then also assumed in those years when those major projects were not occurring, that there would be about $500,000 taxable investment in the general district on an annual basis that we can't identify. So we plugged those numbers in and came up with an estimate of about $310 million of taxable investment in the district over the 20-year life of the, of the plan. And so we basically ran the, the numbers through our, our model and concluded that the number would, properties would produce about $35 million in tax increment proceeds over time. We assumed that about 10% of the proceeds would be retained by the agency for administrative purposes, and we capped that at $50,000 a year, and we wound up with about a little over $34 million available for project expenses through the life of the district. And I think, you look at the plan, we again worked with various sources that told us what kinds of projects would be expected there. We plugged in about $4 million for the undeveloped parcel that is on the northeast, southwest corner of the district. Yeah, there it is. And then took a look at the area, which I call the kind of redevelopment part of the district. And again, the, the major amount of resources there dedicated at about $11 million for transportation. Then there's additional street skate work, probably is going to happen there, about a million dollars worth. Utilities, a number came from the city, about 5.2 million. Hopefully, we're going to see some transit improvements in the area, so we provided some resources for that. Recognizing the agency's ongoing facade improvement program, we wanted to make sure that that was covered. Expansion of the historic lighting districts, provided resources for property acquisition to provide those opportunities to sell any ownerships where small parcels are, are more difficult to redevelopment. Wayfinding is, we see some money parking was provided for public plazas, a significant amount of money is there for that parks and open space, environmental remediation, planning studies for a total of about $33,900,000 over the life of the district. Are these numbers the ones that exactly what we're going to hit? No. But one of the things that we have learned over the last several years is the legislation has changed, and it requires plans be developed with specificity. And so while we try to be as specific as we can, you don't want to tie your hands too much. And so what we've tried to do is encourage staff to let us know at least those areas in which you want to spend money over the years, so we have a listing of areas and categories that will be receiving funds from the new district. Are you stuck with these numbers? No. Over time, the, the board will have the opportunity to budget annually, and some of these numbers may go down, some may go up. The, the total revenue yield is probably not going to be exactly what we said it was either, and so if there are additional resources, additional money could be put into these categories. A rule of thumb is, if you want to do it, you have to put it on the list, because if it's not on the list, you can't do it. If it's on the list, you don't have it. So what we tried to do is cast as broad a net as we could to give as much flexibility to the agency going forward, to do the things that at least we have the ability to understand at this point might be needed. And again, it's fairly important that these issues be listed here, because you cannot modify the plan going forward. You have to basically say what you're going to do here. So I guess with that, we'll be happy to entertain questions about the assumptions that have driven the revenue estimates, and also if you have questions about any of the specifics in the, in the project list, I'm sure that the staff could focus on those numbers as well. Happy to answer any questions I have.
Mayor.
Councilman Shatter.
Maybe it would be helpful to recap a little bit our conversation today. So I've met with the planning department and with our, probably three or four times. And I'm a big believer in developing downtown. I think that's really important. What I think is important, though, I don't think it's enough to say, um, we think there will be a huge increase in value from creating an urban renewal. will be a huge increase in value from creating an urban renewal district. We owe it to ourselves and to the city to take it a step further and actually do the analysis of the return on investment to the city. I mean, there is a cost associated with an urban renewal district where foregoing some growth and the return on taxes is quite steep. Sounded to me like the consulting group would be able to do that analysis for us and actually begin with a two scenarios, so a scenario where we don't create the urban renewal district at a point using our projections, where we do, and really compare the costs associated with the benefits that come. That's just important to me. I'd really like to do that. And then I would like to hear from the finance department comments because of the SA39, 50% improvement. I've already said that they don't, that they can go fine on this, that it doesn't imperil our long-term. Those are just follow-ups that I have. I think intuitively and everything points to being a great pool to use in this area. I, for me personally, I want to do that.
If I could answer the second one for you, just as a general rule for our long-range development process, you do not, you do not add in any anticipated dollars to your current. At least from a very practical standpoint, I would say there is no impact. The other part of it, though, would be, you know, how is redevelopment applied in structural? That would be the question that maybe is the most relevant because simple math, 20 years, 3%. You can't generate these dollars even through just the urban renewal dollars. It does not equal what the city could generate unless new construction is the component that is added into it, then I don't know how that's applied. So that would be the analysis that I would say would help answer your question.
Yeah. So I've done a little, a little bit of preliminary assessment. Right. What we need to do is take a look at the construction aspects. I think if we don't count on new construction portion, I still think there is, there's an opportunity cost of doing nothing. And there's also a cost, incremental cost associated with improvements that would take place. We did not do, so Cameron and I have talked about those assumptions. I think that the market, that this area wouldn't redevelop in this robust way on its own. I do, I do buy into that. I've had a lot of, I think maybe go to, but I do think it's important to look at the whole picture instead of just saying, okay, we're going to have, right, we're going to have this decision to increase the value from doing this. I think it's important to say, okay, here's the cost associated with what we're doing. And so here's the return. Supreme the decision because yeah, just looking at the value and isolating that.
Questions, comments on the topic?
Concern from MDC standpoint on that is I don't know that that analysis is in this couple of work that we have with you. Is, would that be something that would be, what we've done, what we have with you?
Specifically, it's not included. But again, I've done some work on it already today. And it's, I don't think, depending on the level of detail you want and specificity in the analysis, because whatever you do is going to be forecast. Really don't know what's going to happen. What I've done today is put together a model that takes the city of Meridian's current property tax levy and inflates that out at 8% per year, which is the fact that the capacity is allowed up to state law with recent change. And that produced X amount of money out 20 years. And then basically took this analysis and looked at the $688 million increase, which is the increment, and then took 80% of that and then multiplied that against your, the city's tax rate, which was 0.0. And that produced an additional tax capacity eligible for the city to access in 2042 of about $1.2 million. And so there, there was a bump in our conversation with council member strayers. We looked at the post-urban renewal, and we ran that out another 20 years. And what does that look like? That ultimately out there in, in 2060, when we're all sitting around this table again, discussing, it produced about an additional $4 million tax pass to the city. That's basically the fact that we're able to access the incremental value, not only in terms of the new construction value for the urban renewal, they also allow you to capture inflationary value during the district. And so that produced, those two things together produced quite a bit of money that we apply the tax to get. Is the tax rate going to be the same in, over that life? No, it's going to change. It's sensitivity now, higher tax rate, lower tax rate, but in no place did it ever go negative. And so if that level of analysis is what you need, and I think that's easily done, it's what specificity that's going to pass or rigorous analysis.
Sounds like you did it. Thank you so much. No, I appreciate that. I think that, I think that's really helpful information for us. But what that says, it works good. No, I think this is fantastic because I think it shows not only do we think something good will happen in the future from a value perspective, but from where we're sitting today, around our financial condition, from the cap foregoing growth in our tax base, other type of decisions. So I think from a long-term perspective, we could go long-term. That's really helpful to get comfortable with that.
Any additional questions?
I'm not sure who I'm posing this question to, so it's, I guess, the field and we'll let whoever respond, respond. The conversation talked about a lot about that this is an area that is in need of a little more love. I like how we're framing it that way. I'm just curious, there's, there's a lot of stakeholders in this area, and I'm just curious, what is the engagement been with that group, or when is that part going to happen? When are we going to communicate with our residents and our business owners what is being proposed and what's the response been? We've already been doing.
Yes, Ashley.
We are having, can you hear me? We are having. There's, there's. We are having. We are having. There's also this process. This is maybe that the record of public process.
Do you anticipate a fairly robust?
Any further questions regarding item one or comments?
I have one more slide to go through with some wild cards that are out there. Cameron. Okay. So there's, there's two overlaying issues as well that we have to consider as we formalize this effort moving forward. And the first, as I mentioned, the 17-acre parcel is currently located in unincorporated Hating County. This concept is premise on the fact that that will be annexed into the city and that will require two discordance coming down the track. So we're closely monitoring that situation. To the extent one or the other kind of falls off schedule, that, you know, could be impacted to how we move forward. The second point is based on legislative changes over the last couple of years, there's now, the highway district is able to retain its portion of the levy on the increment unless there's an agreement entered into between the highway district and the urban renewal agency. Those conversations between MDC and ACHD are occurring, that is moving forward, but that's just another additional nuanced piece that we have to consider moving forward. So that's all I have on the.
Thank you. Any questions? Okay. Great. Well, then let's move on to item two, draft First Amendment to the renewal plan for the district urban renewal project.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council board. For this, this section of town, you're, you're already very well aware of the city block. And now this is just the addition of the north. For another addition to the, this is an actual annexation of the whole district now annexed. With that, we'll turn it back over to Megan as well. There is a little bit different nuance to this. We can do on it.
Thanks, Cameron. So you'll see a slide similar to the northern gateway slide where we have outlined what the plan requirements are. This is a First Amendment to your union district project area. And so what the, what the approach that we have taken is, is identifying those sections that in your union district plan that will be changed as a result of this First Amendment effort. You still have to look at the plan requirements and elements that are set forth in 502905. And on your screen, again, identify the sections where we have made tweaks to the original plan pursuant to this amendment. In the, in the first, again, we've updated that 10% analysis, and that's in, that's in the, the body of that First Amendment, you will just see the limited section in the text that are changing, and that's found in an amendment to 502.3. There's some tweaks to the project list and how that's explained in the plan narrative. There's been a few updates there as a result of some proposed new improvement projects within, within that 1.461 acre annexation that we're talking about. So that's in amendment to 301 and also Attachment 5A. And what we have done, so the original union district plan had an economic feasibility study that was premise on a certain number of assumptions. What has been done is an update of that, recognizing existing conditions and perhaps changing some of the assumptions from, that were underlying that original, but also forecasting from here forward and identifying what new growth and development is anticipated to occur in that annexation area and adding that into the calculation. So there is that supplement to the economic feasibility study, which we are referring to as Attachment 5A. The fiscal impact statement, there's just been a few minor tweaks to that to recognize updated certified levy rate analysis and assumptions moving forward on that front. And then, you know, finally, I think it's important to note that this First Amendment does not extend the duration of the plan. That plan is still 20 years from the adoption of the union district project area. This amendment does not make it go longer. Um, so for this particular project area, the union district area plan was adopted post-July 1, 2019, which means that a new statutory provision is now in play, which essentially stands for the proposition that you can't amend a post-July 1, 2016 plan without risk of resetting the base. And when you reset the base, obviously, you eliminate your revenue stream going forward. There are four exceptions in that statutory provision that are not considered a modification of the plan under that statute. And one of them is the annexation of the area pursuant to another statutory reference, 502033. 502033 says that you have a one-time opportunity to take in up to 10% of the geographic area of your existing revenue allocation area. So the union district project area was originally 16 acres. 10% of that is 1.6. Well, we are contemplating an annexation size of just 1.461 acres, so it's a very small annexation. list was derived essentially from looking at the city's comprehensive plan, destination downtown, conversations with city and MDC staff, as well as property owners and developers in that project area. The Trivian did not conduct a planning study in this area, but that is, that's okay because we are only taking in a portion of the right-of-way on Idaho. And some of that analysis is contained within your city planning documents and within the knowledge of city staff. That's why they're not related to other things. So the next two slides will jump into Phil's Attachment 5A.
Thank you, Megan. Again, this one, we kind of had to launch off of the adopted plan for the union district that the council adopted last year. And so what we did was we basically restated the elements of the plan that were there and then kind of added the new addition, which is basically only 11 tax person, which are very raised on. And so we updated that by basically bringing forward the, the assumptions that I described in the northern gateway and bringing those into this plan as well, so that the two plans are basically driven by the same assumptions. We basically forecast what the union block, original union block people said they were going to do, and then added some level of tax and investment for the new block as well. And so with that machination, we came up with about a total of $28 million to spend over the remaining 19 years now of the district. And so one of the major components, if you recall, in the union district was participation in the potential civic center on the civic block site. So that was in the plan, and so we left that there. And then we added a substantial component for parking and then provided resources for open space, property acquisition, environmental remediation and so forth. Again, I'm. Again, under the theory that you wanted to provide a checklist of areas that you might want to be called upon to invest in during the 20-year life of the project. So that is what we've done. The other question that might come up is, given the, the small nature of the project, is this likely to take 20 years to do? And maybe, maybe not. And, but as Megan indicated, now through legislative change, you have a maximum 20-year life on your project. And in good old days, you might be able to go amend the plan and extend the termination date, but you can't do that anymore. And so also you have to be specific in terms of what you're going to do in the plan. And so that's goes back to first the list of projects that we have here. If at some point at 10 or 15 years into the process, you basically exhausted your list of activities and you can't add any more, then basically what you're facing to do is an early termination. Since you have the ability to terminate early, but you don't have the ability to extend, we basically brought forth the position that you should adopt it to the full length of the authority and then recognizing that at some point in the future, you may find yourself in a situation where you'd want to pursue an early termination. That's kind of how we dealt with that 20-year issue and, and is there really enough work there to last 20 years? Maybe, maybe not. That'll be a question that I have to part of.
Councilman Schrader.
Yeah, that was if for some reason the community started to happen or I guess my only follow-up question on that would be does it happen automatically? Recognize if that is certified city and we shorten it or how does that, how does that mechanism actually work?
I might, I'd like to give legal advice.
Thank you, Councilman Schrader. That, that's a great question. You know, the statute addresses a lot of components, but it doesn't address, address every scenario. But there are some limited provisions in the statute that address the termination process. And that termination process is commenced by the agency board. They would have to adopt a resolution of intent. I do think because the impact of going out of a district are so significant, if we're nearing that time period, oftentimes you will find city council and, and agency boards working very closely together to kind of make that determination into what works best for both.
File the other question. I did see the city's contribution, I guess, to the assumption that that makes work better, but I did see that $28 billion on the previous slide. Maybe just a follow-up.
The issue was, and this got a little complicated because of the city's contribution coming into that, into the financial model. We wanted to recognize at least, again, going back to the original adoption, that contribution was recognized in that. So if we're going to amend the plan, we wanted to make sure that we kept as much of the plan whole as we could. We were advised there was some concentration about the contribution expanding to either 3A but the expenditure side of what's really going to cost was where that other one came from, which is basically a money in, money out kind of situation. And again, we put the, the city's contribution not in the assured column because until the actual agreement is signed, the resources are provided. It's one of those speculative issues that we wanted to make sure that our specificity requirement has got as much included in that, that listing as, as we could. So I don't think there's anybody suggesting it's an obligation on your part, but it's a, a pathway recognized in at least a preliminary conversation we've had.
Is there more presentation? I know, I thought we were going to stop. We're good. Okay. Any further questions or comments? Yes, Megan.
One more slide. Similar to the northern gateway, we have to also address the ACHD agreement only with regard to the annexation. So there does not have to be an ACHD agreement in the union district, but there would need to be one.
Counsel, any additional questions or comments? MDC board? And I have a motion or final comments from staff.
Cameron, we can't hear you. You can grab the mic.
It's been really good to be in front of you. Don't want to belabor this, but just really appreciate the opportunity. You know, there's a lot going into these things. We are working fast and furious, but we feel these are really moving forward on good footing and we're making good progress with property owners and others to, to really make these steps forward in our downtown. So really appreciate the opportunity today.
Thank you. With that, do I have a motion? Councilmember. Motion second to adjourn the meeting now, if ever seen in front by SNI. opposed nay. The ayes have it. We are adjourned.
Council, we'll call the meeting to order. For the record, it is August 24th at 6:02 PM. We'll begin tonight's regular city council meeting with real call attendance.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Councilman Borton.
Here.
Councilman Cavanagh.
Here.
Councilwoman Perrow.
Here.
Councilwoman Strater.
Here.
Councilman Hoagland.
Here.
Councilman Burnt.
Here.
Mayor Simison.
Here.
Next item is the Pledge of Leagues. If you'd all please rise and join us in the pledge. Next item, we did not have anyone sign up under the community invocation, so we'll move on to the adoption of the agenda.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember.
Move that we adopt the agenda as published.
Second the motion. I have a motion, a second to adopt the agenda as published. Is there any discussion? If not, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. The ayes have it and the agenda is adopted. Next up is the consent agenda.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember.
I move that we adopt the or approve the consent agenda for the mayor to sign and for the clerk to attest.
Second the motion.
I have a motion, a second to approve the consent agenda. Is there any discussion? If not, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. The ayes have it and the consent agenda is agreed to. There are no items moved from the consent agenda. Mr. Cork, can anybody sign up under public form?
Mr. Mayor, there were no signups.
Okay, thank you very much. So we will move into department commission reports. So item 16 is Public Work Proposed 2022 Solid Waste Fee Discussion, and we'll turn this over to Joe. You know.
Good evening, Mayor, council members. Before I speak this evening about rates, I would like to introduce our solid waste coordinator, Sarah Schultz. She started this week on Monday.
Nice to meet you.
Thought it would be good that you can recognize her face. Before I, I want to, in two weeks, Republic Services will be presenting their fiscal '22 rate proposal to you. This year, there are two fees that have MOUs attached to them. One is the continuance of the recycle processing fee, and the other is a one-time market labor adjustment. Those MOUs have been sent to you through email in advance. This evening, we're not asking for any action, but wanted to provide you with the opportunity to outline any questions or information that you would like us to prepare for the presentation that's in two weeks. So please, if there's any information that you would like us to add, let me know.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilwoman Scherer.
Thank you, Joanna. I know one thing that came up in the discussions for the SWAC committee was getting a schedule of all of the cities, some of our surrounding cities, and what they pay on residential. So I was hoping you'd have, have that maybe in a couple of weeks for context.
I do have that information. I don't have it with me, but we can make sure we include that.
That would be perfect. And then maybe just, maybe just like a little flavor or background for the discussion.
That's what I was gonna go to, see if you wouldn't mind summarizing the information that's been provided to council for the public in the record.
Absolutely. Actually, I brought Republic Services in this evening so that they would be the best to describe the rates that they are requesting.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Mayor, the Republic Services representatives are coming. I was just to give context to the council. So we've had an ongoing collection services contract, MOU, dating back a number of years, and their predecessor, SSC, was the recent one that we did some amendments to. And since Republic Services has been our provider since 2012, we've had a few occasions to have some MOUs memorialized. Some of it was to memorialize existing services that had already been provided previously, but had never been memorialized in a document. It was predominantly dealing with recycling. But the, the two that are in front of you, one again is a continuation, as Joanna mentioned. A few years ago, we started doing a, a small charge because of where recycling had landed worldwide and the cost of both, not just the collection, but the processing of, of recycling had increased significantly and the return had diminished significantly. The city agreed annually to review that request from Republic to share some of those costs of the processing fees. So that's what that MOU is capturing. The second one again is a new fee that Republic's asking to add to the base rate. And then, and asking the city to share in that, some of that cost of, basically on the collection side. Again, I think Republic can get to more specifics than what our intention was, again, to come back in two weeks and do a full-blown presentation. After we've noticed the fees for appropriately as required by code before they can be implemented. So that's kind of the background of where we are today. And so I could turn it back over to Republic.
Thank you. You can say your name and address for the record or whoever's gonna be commenting.
Okay. I am Bob Bennett, General Manager, Republic Services, address 1101 West Executive Drive in Boise. I'm gonna comment specifically on the labor increase and what is an ask. It's no secret that businesses, not just here in the Treasure Valley, but across the country, are having a really hard time with labor today. It's a very big deal, and more specifically, commercial drivers. It's a nationwide problem. And one of our challenges has been here in the valley, everybody's scrambling to get drivers. So those wages have went up. We've had people offered crazy amounts of money to, to jump. And so we started a process back in November of last year where we did a labor analysis to make sure that we were at or slightly above market, and we were able to not just get the best candidates, but retain the talent that we've got in our team. So, you know, one of the things that, that, you know, I've noticed since getting here, you know, when I started with this company, when I would post a position, I'd get 25 applicants at least per position. And I've seen that change over time. So we went through this, this market adjustment process. We actually did the adjustment already, and what we're asking for is consideration to share 50% of that adjustment through our rate increase this year. So Republic is, is gonna, you know, take part in 50%. We're asking as a business partner that Meridian takes 50% of that in their rates. I will tell you, since implementing this, we are now in, in one of the best staffing positions we've been since COVID started and providing everybody makes it through their background checks going into leaf season this year. We're gonna be close to fully staffed, which is a, you know, hasn't been the case for the last, you know, couple of years. So I feel really good about it. Our, our drivers, and I have a passion for this, these men and women work really, really hard, and we've gotta pay them a wage that allows them to own homes, have a life, raise their families. And so, thank you for your consideration. Are there any questions?
Thank you. Counsel, any questions?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Hoagland.
Mr. Bennett, I was just kinda curious, besides wages, it is also benefits packages, or is it just primarily the, the pay rate?
Yep, this is just pay rate. So benefits is our, you know, we have our company benefits package that doesn't change. What we did is for drivers across the board, $2 an hour. And for some of our other hourly employees, it was less than that, but somewhere around the dollar mark on average. And we, we did it for all hourly positions. Nothing in, in the management or salaried labor side.
Mr. Mayor, just a council follow-up comment was, I remember it was on council when a previous contractor came before us and announced that they wanna switch out trucks and go to automatic lifts, you know, and whatnot. So I think that was a good decision back then, even though some people were concerned about the loss of jobs and people, you know, out of work when really that's the way you have to go, cause you have less manpower and, and of course, the, the weight that some of them lifted and what it did to their bodies. So anything we can automate now looks like is the way to go.
Yep, and we're gonna continue to be an innovator with the automation, cause I agree with you.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilwoman Scherer.
Maybe just to give some background information, like additional background if it's helpful. So the way that our contract works currently, it's based on 90% of CPI. And so that's the allowable increase that they can request. They have, in the past, had a federal, basically, fuel offset credit that they've credited back to the city that you could argue partially, does it partially or wholly cover the cost of the increase? Get wholly covers it?
Almost exact.
So there was some debate on SWAC about whether, you know, one path could be to say, okay, just hold on, let's not make a change. You'll, you can request, you know, CPI, and then you can just not cut us a check for the federal tax credit. There is also some discussion about if we make this change ensuring it's for one year only and that it's not actually added to the fees going forward. I think Republic would, would like it to be added going forward, and there was some discussion on SWAC about whether that was appropriate. So I just wanted to give that, you know, kind of context for everybody, some of the discussion. My, my question in, not the last meeting, I was in another place, another meeting, but the previous meeting, my question was, you know, how much of the labor costs are you passing through, right? So you're running a business, very profitable business, Republic Services doing well, and some of our commissioners are checking up on your quarterly financial filings and so forth to, to see how you're doing. And one of the questions I had was, you know, you need to do better too, right? To control your costs and manage your way through an inflationary environment. It's not realistic to pass through like 100% of your labor costs. And so my primary question was, how much of this are you gonna go ahead and take on the chin and eat into your own margins and do things better and faster and more efficiently before you come to the city of Meridian? So I just wanted to kind of give that, that background.
Thank you. Counsel, any additional questions for?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Borton.
Just a comment, I guess. I, I appreciate several things from, from this, that the perspective that your company has taken to be proactive, to ensure you've got the right labor force to provide the services. There have been occasions in prior years when there's been challenges and citizens are understandably irate, and, and we get calls understandably so. So you've been very proactive to, to avoid that problem, so I commend you for that. You've been proactive in solving it first and not coming to the city and, you know, solving it only if the city participates. I think that also, it just shows a good partnership and relationship with the city. And then the, the idea of, of sharing that expense, it's not all being passed on to the ratepayers necessarily. We're all sharing the struggle with trying to have the manpower to provide the services that we're required to provide. So I appreciate that approach. I think it's consistent with the way your company's been a partner with the city. We'll do the discussion in a couple of weeks. Okay.
Counsel, anything else?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilwoman Scherer.
Sorry. Maybe just one more comment. So I, I think it makes, I echo Councilman Borton's comments, and I think it makes sense to help you guys right now through what has been a little bit of a shock probably to your business plan. I, I do think it would be important context when we make the decision if we're going beyond what our contract outlines, that we get grounded in how much we're paying per resident, you know, how much we're paying for each type of service compared to our surrounding cities to make sure that if we're going outside of our contract, we feel like the Meridian taxpayers are still getting really good value for the service that, that they expect. So I just wanted to state that.
Thank you for being here and for the update and the service you provide. Next item on the agenda is number 17 from our finance department, fiscal year 2022 citywide fee updates.
Thank you, Mayor, Council. I'll try and make this as painless as possible, cause we're talking about fees.
Mr. Mayor.
No. Councilmember.
You've had, you've had, you've had, you've had a lot of practice up until now, though.
Right? You know, I stretched before I got up here, so we're good. I appreciate it. Thank you. So today, I'm standing before you, we have a total of 123 fee changes. To break that down, you can see 121 of those are related to water meters, water repair fees. Those are basically passed through, the price of X meter changed. So we're rolling that up so we make sure we capture what we're paying for. We have one new planning fee, that is a reman fee, and then we have a building fee update. That one's contractual. It goes up like $8. That's based on the contract. So in summary, that's the, the total number. We break this out a little bit differently. When we look at the updates, we have 28 of these fees are greater than 5%, which means we have to notice these, which we will be doing over the next two weeks. 48 of them are less than 5%, so we don't have to notice those. They will be included in the resolution. And we have 47 new fees, which I'll break down here. That are, that are new. When I look at the one, at the fees that are greater than 5%, and see that, you know, 28 of them are related to, as I mentioned earlier, these that are basically a pass-through. Building fee is the one where it's just a contractual change. It just happened to be that that change is, is greater than 5% from what we have. When I look at the new fees, you see about 46 of them are related to those fees that are strictly pass-through. And we have one reman. That is new that we will be noticing. With that, you know, the next steps, really, we need to publish those fees that are, are new or over 5%. I'll be back in front of you again for public hearing. Seeking your approval, solution and whatnot on the fee updates for the year. And then we have the public hearing setting up for 9/21. With the, the idea that these fee changes would be effective October 1. With that, I'll stand for any question.
Thank you, Brad. Counsel, any questions at this time? Councilman Haver.
One question, it may not be for you, but that reman fee doesn't have a dollar amount associated with it. Am I?
It should be $705. All right, that one must have not gotten included in that, we were working on the, the basis for that. There's like a little bit of clerk's time involved with that and then re-notice or do something else, I can't remember offhand just because I'm standing up here.
Fair enough, maybe when we, when we come back for the public hearing, just kind of clear the air.
I will do that. Thank you.
Counsel, Mr. Schrader.
Thanks, Brad. Just a couple of questions, when is the last time we updated our fees? Does it happen annually? Does it happen every five years?
Thank you, Mayor, Councilman, Councilwoman Schrader, we try to do this once a year. We collect all the fees that need to change annually, so it's an annual process.
And then, you know, I was looking at some of the fees in the schedule and there were several that were changing by 40% or more. In one case for hydrant meters, it was like 70%, it's a significant change. What is driving the cost increase? Is it the, you know, commodity prices or the equipment costs? Is it labor? Is it both? Like especially with these ones where we're seeing a big change, kind of what are the drivers of that?
Thank you, Councilman Schrader. I do have public works here to help with that, I believe it's simply pass-through. So, you know, like, I'm, I'm on that, but my understanding was it's pass-through.
Mr. Schrader, it is pass-through, but it, it has to do with the, the polymers of the meters, trying to get that at this particular point. With the hydro meters in, in general.
Speak into the mic. It's hard for everybody to.
Either one.
Hello? That's better.
There we go.
With the hydro meters in general, it's, they have changed the design, they're more modular. In the past, we've been able to buy just, say, a meter register head. Now they've built that into the whole measuring chamber, so that increases, is the fact that that's the only thing we can now purchase for that particular meter.
Got it, so they're really, you just have one option available, the manufacturers increase the price and it's a pure pass-through in terms of whatever equipment, whatever we, whatever price we get, we simply pass that through. Okay, and do we add any additional charges for labor or anything? Okay, thank you, makes sense.
Councilman Hogan.
Or Dennis goes too far, might answer this, maybe you Brad, but I, I was just curious. You know, the bottom half of this, they talk about new fees and its adapters and bushings and different things. Or this, is this because of some changes in the types of things used? Or are they, because we're breaking things out now, where before that was just part of that meter and we knew that they needed that stuff? But you tell me a little bit about the new fees, what, why some of those are, are there? So five-dollar parts and whatnot.
Yes, Councilman Hogan, that's, that's a very good question, it's, it's no secret, there's a lot of construction going on now. And we're starting to see that in, in damages to our utilities. So these, these new fees are to cover the costs of the different fittings and materials needed to repair these utilities. And we, and we, we're seeing that, that the little items like these that you're seeing are definitely adding up on these repairs. So we were trying to capture that cost and, and pass those along to those who've damaged it and not.
Good, thank you.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Borden.
What part of the discussion early on in the fees, the fee update process includes what fees to cut or eliminate? That part of the standing agenda for the annual review of fees? Will we increase?
Thank you, Councilman, and Borden. There are, I don't have them listed here, there are several fees that we are actually deleting or removing. I want to say that's about 20, 20, 20, 13. There are fees that if we, we haven't charged or no longer, they're obsolete, you know. We do clean that up as part of the process.
And a follow-up to that.
That's what Borden.
Is there any, is there a reason why when we publish the, the fees that are changing by 5% that since we're publishing anyway, we don't publish all of them or include publishing the ones that are being eliminated?
A great question.
If it's not required?
Yeah. Maybe it's preference, Councilman Borden. You know, in one way, we, we'll have all the changes in a, in the resolution. We're required, I think by a state statute to publish any new fee or any fee that is increased to 5%. Maybe it's cut down on paper, since there are a lot, but if there's a preference either way.
The reason I bring it up is I think part of, part of the process, it's important is the validity in, in the structure of what you go through to end up with these fees. And it's not, there's, there's several steps that the public really doesn't see, we don't see, but there's a lot of work behind the scenes that vets them and part of that important process that I think it's helpful for the public to know is that you look at fees to reduce or look at fees to cut, they're now obsolete. I think it's important, an important part of the story, that lends credibility to the end result. Same as any outreach you do to stakeholders. I just think all of that is an important part of the story. So publishing it just makes the public more aware that some fees are going up less than 5%, we're letting you know, and some fees are getting eliminated. Just, it makes the public more receptive process and therefore I appreciate you doing, I'm glad, I'm not surprised it's part of the process, but I think it's really good stewardship to make sure that anytime you can eliminate or reduce, you do so.
Thank you.
Well, if it's counsel's desire to publish every fee, I would rather is make a code or policy change citywide, not just apply it to here and put it in ordinance, if that's what your desire is. I just can't tell, it's.
Mr. Mayor, it could be a future meeting, it's just something to discuss, just, it's a notice concept where code has a minimum requirement, but you don't have to do it for this one-off, but there's an opportunity for us to provide additional notice if these are changed. Could be a future meeting topic.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Mayor, again, just for some context, Counsel, the, the, the primary reason to not publish every fee is cost. I, I mean, again, it's just an additional cost and it is very expensive printing it. But to Councilman Borden's point on the solid waste fees, Republic absorbs that cost. So they do print all the fees regardless of whether they've, while they obviously do new fees and increase by 5% but even increases less than 5%, they print those as well, but they do absorb that cost. So, so we do do it that way for those, and we've done it differently for the citywide fees. But to your point, Councilman Borden, I think it's true, is that part of the conversation has to be that there is, there is a method to that. I mean, again, we don't simply randomly pick the number, I mean, it's based on some formula and math and accounting practices and needs. So, you know, it is, sometimes you will have folks that object to the cost of something that's $1,200. Well, again, it's been vetted significantly and that is a cost recovery, that's, they're not, they're not making a profit. It's simply based on what it costs to process that or notice, notice up the public hearings and make the notifications and all of those things. So, so good, good information for future discussions as to whether or not to do that.
Mr. Mayor. Counsel, I'm Borden.
Maybe it's just as simple as, you know, having that discussion on the public record during a, a presentation, just so that people are wanting to know what that is and what we are cutting like. Also, Councilman Borden mentioned, just maybe even just that, I think might be suffice.
We'll do that.
Counsel, any additional questions on this topic? Thank you, we'll see you back here in a month.
Thank you.
Okay, we will now move on to our public hearings for the evening. First up is a public hearing for Creason Creek subdivision number three, SHP 2021-0003. We'll open this public hearing with staff comments.
Good evening, Mayor and Counsel, Alan Tiefenbach, Associate Planner with City of Meridian. So yes, this is a short plot for two lots, subject property is just a little less than half an acre. It's zoned R8, it's located near the southeast corner of West Eustick Road in North Linder, it's over to the southeast, you can see there. December, I, I put up these exhibits so, because it's a little confusing, so I can sort of describe this to you. In September of 2015, the subject property was part of the Creason Creek annexation and preliminary plot. This plot consisted of 51 single-family lots and eight common lots on 16 acres. The entire property was zoned to R8. At this time, the subject property was identified as Lot 1, Block 1. If you can see in my pointer, this is the subject property here. Again, it was identified as Lot 1, Block 1, and at the time, it was designated as a common lot for the purpose of a dog park. The first final plot for the subdivision allowed 34 buildable lots, that was approved in 2016. And then there was the next filing, which was filing two, that was approved for 13 residential lots in 2018. In 2019, the city council approved the modification to the previously approved final plot number two to relocate the dog park. So the dog park was originally here. This modification to the final plot allowed this dog park, let me close, allowed this dog park to be moved over to here. It also adjusted the boundary to incorporate a little more land. And it allowed this lot to become two buildable lots. So originally this was buildable, buildable lots, this one was an open space. This was basically a land swap where this, this dog park moved over here and allowed this to be buildable. This increased the common open space slightly. This current proposal now is a short plot to complete that subdivision that was allowed for that buildable lot. And it would be then so dividing into two new lots, 17 and 16. Access will occur by a common drive, which is here, actually our regulations say it has to be a common lot, applicants aware of that. That'll be, again, a, a tract for the purpose of the drive. Staff has reviewed the short class for, a, a short plot for substantial compliance. Staff notes, like I said, that the access is a, is a easement, I, this is the sort of a, we asked the applicant to demonstrate how the buildable area would go here, just because of the strange configuration of the lot, which is what you see here. We wanted to make sure they had adequate parking and that they were able to make the parking work, which they can. As I said, the, the access right now is a common easement, whereas UDC requires all common driveways to be on a common lot. We asked them to provide this exhibit. One thing I want to mention is that we have received one letter in opposition to this request. This, the, the issue that's at hand here is that the property owner directly to the south was told during the hearings for the original preliminary plot that the property, the subject property was to remain an open space park. Sort of like what I said. However, when the final plot modification happened, a public hearing and notification are not required. So he wasn't sent notification, so he was not aware that this lot was converted to be a buildable lot, which now it's for the most part entitled to do that. So I, I believe the, the, the neighbor is here tonight to talk about that, but certainly he has an issue he wants to express with that. Other than that, speaking purely from the code, it meets all the regulations and therefore staff recommends that counsel approve. Now, stand for any questions?
Thank you, Council, any questions? Would the applicant like to come forward? Say your name and address for the record, please.
Mr. Mayor and Counsel, my name is Bob Unger. My address is 9662 West Arnold Road, Boise, Idaho, 83714, and I represent CS2 LLC, who is the owner of the property. I've gone through the staff report and we concur with the staff report and their presentation. And we also agree with the conditions of approval, so we would stand for any questions that you might have.
Counsel, any questions? Okay, thanks very much. This is a public hearing, Mr. Quick, can anyone sign up for my testimony?
Mr. Mayor, yes, Stephen Kaiser.
Say your name and address for the record, be recognized for three minutes.
Thank you, my name is Stephen Kaiser, I live at 1354 West Claire Street in Meridian. My property backs up to this, to this proposed amendment, which from the very beginning, I, I was told that it's a done deal and nothing I my, none of my concerns would be, ever be addressed to my satisfaction, but I wanted to bring my concerns here. I can't read this very well. Concerning the existing dog park in Creason Creek Phase 1. In 2016, when the subplans were presented to the city, the developer was was told that in able to use this property and the, the property that he's giving as the alternate dog park area, that they had to tile in Creason Creek from 13th Street over to Linder, which would cover the whole thing so that there would be access. And he told me at that time that it wasn't cost-effective and that the, the section that is in question today would be remain a dog park, and he told me that in person at the on-property land meeting that they had. The sub was built and the dog park, which it was presented to the city as, was constructed. This took out the ditch that provided what our water rights for irrigation to my subdivision out of the play. We hadn't been using it for a few years, but we still, if I sold my land now, I would have to tell them, you have water, water rights, but you can't get to it anymore because they built us houses here and stuff. And nothing was done about that. The, I believe that the dog park should then belong to the HOA that and all the, the people in that subdivision, because they pay the fees that maintain the, the management group as well as the lawn care and pay the water and I presume the taxes as well. So I don't understand how the original developer can come back and say that he owns that land. It should be owned by all the HOA people in the subdivision. And I found out and talking with different neighbors that originally he did not own the land that was the access, it's only about 30 feet, but it's from 13th Street, which is where the new driveway that has to be shared by these two, two homes is now located. But after the subdivision was built, he was able to purchase that piece of land for a dollar from the HOA that owned it. And they, they all, the people that I talked to, I went door to door and asked them about it and they told me that they sold the land with the understanding that this was going to remain a dog, a, a dog park for the area and that they use it and it's my backyard, so I know that people use it and stuff. And they were very upset about that because they felt like their agreement wasn't And they were very upset about that because they felt like their agreement wasn't being followed. When the houses in Creason Creek were being marketed, I went through almost every open house that was there and talked with the realtors. And not one of them knew about the dog park there. So there, they hadn't been told that this is, which now in retrospect tells me that he had planned this from the very beginning. The, the piece of land that is going to be a dog park now has absolutely no access for a vehicle from all three sides. It's a big triangle there. It has Linda Road and Five Mile Creek on one side, a subdivision on the other and Creason Creek on the other side that goes along the entire thing. So the only way that it will be able to be used at all is after the footbridge is built, which it isn't yet.
If you could conclude your remarks.
Yes, thank you. I guess that's about it. Thank you. I put it all in the email I send out anyway.
Counsel, any questions?
Steve.
Councilman Burton.
Sorry, Mr. Mayor, sorry.
Councilman Burton.
Mr. Mayor, I appreciate your, Steve, I appreciate your, your comments because the email that we had in the, in the public record, like maybe like an inch of the email wasn't. And so it wasn't able, I wasn't able to read all of it. So it wasn't quite following exactly. Thanks for your comments. I understand.
I, my last comment is I've lived in this, in my property for thirty-eight years. So I know I'm prejudiced. I wanted view and, and all this stuff, but I do. Every person that I talked to, the boarders there do not want a two-story house built there. And personally, I can't stand the fence that they put in all the other properties. So I was wondering how I could have an input to to let that be known and stuff.
Councilman Cameron, do you have a?
Steve, maybe one more question for you real quick. Sorry, you're getting, you're getting your steps in. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Steve, you talked a little bit about that the dog park was owned by the homeowners association. Wouldn't it be if they paid the fees?
My, I, I always thought that when they put a park in the subdivision or whatever, the subdivision owns it, not the developer that can come back four years later and say, hey, I want to put a couple more five hundred and fifty thousand dollar homes on.
Or maybe a pub. Steve, what you, you indicate in your testimony that, that you said the homeowners association sold the land for a dollar. Is that the same homeowners association?
One that owned that strip of land, which there were two brothers that owned the, the land. One of them subdivided his six years ago, and that included thirteenth street. And the second one died just a few years ago and now his property is subdivided.
Counsel, any additional questions?
Mr. Mayor.
That's wrong.
I, I know we'll have the applicant come and, and discuss it further, but just so he has the benefit of the question and answer here to Alan. One of the things I'm curious about is that these, these homes will be along the Creason lateral and the driveway. And I noticed in the agency comments, there weren't any comments from Napa Meridian Irrigation District. I didn't know if it's because of a short plat situation or what, but you know, there is that requirement when along laterals and ditches of, of a certain amount of easement on both sides from the center line of, of those facilities. So I, I want to make sure that everything is copacetic with the driveway and buildings and everything else for that, since I didn't see their comments on this.
Uh, uh, thank you, sir. Alan Tiefenbach, Associate Planner. If you're looking at this plat right now, there is an easement for the Creason lateral there. That's what you're seeing.
Mr. Mayor and Alan. Follow up. Okay, that says easement, see note eleven. That twenty feet is, is the driveway then is part of the.
Correct, sir. That's, that's, that's part of this property, but actually staff is recommending that that easement, well, not recommending. The code says that we no longer have common lots and easements. So what you're seeing there, the twenty-foot wide common drive easement will need to be an actual lot, a common lot. So what, that's our recommendation is that this be converted to a lot.
Okay, I follow that. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, Alan.
Councilman Pearl.
Mr. Mayor, thank you very much. Question for staff. I'm trying to figure out. I've looked at just about every document in the, in the file, and I don't see where there's pedestrian access to the other parts of that, of the subdivision. I if this is phase three, I assume that this is going to be a part of Creason, Creason Creek overall. Can you talk to us about what obligations there are? Is it different as a short, part of the short plat process or I don't, I don't see where this connects at all to the other portions of the subdivision.
I don't know if I was so counsel person Pearl. I'm not sure if I would say it connects to the subdivision. It, it connects to thirteenth street. The, the access to this lot is to the east off of thirteenth street. I would have to defer to the applicant, but I do not believe there's a pedestrian bridge or anything like that across this part, although I do know they're building a pedestrian bridge across the part to the north. So there is access off of thirteenth, but not directly into the subdivision.
Mr. Mayor, a follow up.
Councilman Pearl.
If the resident lived in that location, they wouldn't have direct access to any of the amenities.
Again, I might defer that to the applicant. My understanding is you'd have to walk on thirteenth and go around and go in, but the applicant might be able to describe that better than me.
Thank you very much.
Is there anybody else who'd like to come forward and provide testimony on this item at this time? Either in the room or anybody online. If you're online and you'd like to provide testimony, use the raise your hand function at the bottom. And we can bring you in. We do have someone online who would like to provide testimony. Mr. Mayor, they're unmuted. You can say your name and address for the record.
Sure, it's Merrily Will Fong and my address is one, two, three, five West Lowry Street.
Can you hear me? For three minutes.
Yes, I'm in the subdivision to the east of Creason Creek. I'm in Southwick. And my house sits across thirteenth from the dog park. And anyway, we were given notification of possibly multi-units going in there or, you know, single level dwellings. And it just didn't make sense to me because of the close proximity to that canal there. I just think that there is a lot of wildlife. There's a lot of, we've seen raccoons over there. We've seen geese, a lot of birds use that area, and it just didn't make sense to make that a part of Creason Creek subdivision in developing it, adding more units there instead of leaving it as a buffer zone because of the close proximity to that canal.
Counsel.
I, I did leave a message on the phone as well for my testimony. I just, I just wanted to check in and hear, you know, how the hearing was going, how the committee was going and, and what their views were on that. But I totally agree with the gentleman that did make an appearance that, that backs up to that lot. I've seen many people use it as a dog park and I don't know. You know, that was presented at the time when I went over there to discuss it with them. Hey, what are you guys doing over here? They said they were making a dog park, that they weren't going to develop that. And I'm not sure who I was talking to at the time. But, and I wasn't even sure that was a part of Creason Creek because it's kind of divided by the canal there. But anyway, I was surprised when talking to a neighbor in Southwick because he received the notification too as far as what our views were, and it just didn't make sense. I mean, slam a couple of more single levels in there and maybe earn some more tax dollars or, you know, the developer makes some money off it or a builder or whatever. It just, it just is an odd piece of land there to really consider developing and not leaving it as a buffer.
Thank you. Counsel, any questions? Right, thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Is there anybody else who would like to provide testimony on this item at this time? I've now lost the applicant to come forward for closing remarks.
Mr. Mayor and Council, Bob Unger again. Just very briefly. We are proposing, you know, we do, or we are building a new pedestrian bridge for the new location of the dog park. The new location. Well, the old location was, we kind of thought it was a poor location as it turned out because we were being told by the residents of Creason Creek that nobody even knew it was there. Wasn't, the word wasn't getting out. The HOA didn't, wasn't aware of it. And kind of based on that and, and also the fact that, that the location, the new location was originally identified for three future building lots. And we decided that the location, the new location was a better location than the current one. And with the purchase of the common area, the small strip there on thirteenth from the adjacent HOA, it gave us access to this lot to where we could produce two lots to make up for the three lots that we got rid of to put in the new dog park. And also the new dog park is located adjacent to the future nature park that was a part of our approval. And that is to the west of the dog park. We've already put in the pathways for that portion of the project and also to the dog park area. And as soon as we get the bridge installed, then everybody will have access to the dog park, the nature park and also the children's park and everything that will be located in that area. So all of our park amenities and everything will be in one general location that everybody is aware of and they can find and they can get to and utilize. The, let's see, the lateral, the Creason lateral, which is to the north of this, of the subject site has been fenced. It has been fenced with a wrought iron fencing. And that is established on the easement of the lateral, and it was approved by Napa Meridian Irrigation District. Let me think here. I think overall, you know, this is, this is a win for the Creason Creek HOA and the residents of, of Creason Creek. And it's also an opportunity for the developer to recoup the sum of his cost in the loss of the other three lots. And with that, I'll, I'll stand for any questions that you might have.
Thank you. Counsel, any questions?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Pearl.
Did you address that, the question that I had asked the staff regarding residents of these lots, how they would access the amenities? How they would access the rest of the, of the development by foot? Do they need to walk out onto thirteenth, thirteenth street and then come up across on Lowry?
Mr. Mayor. The old dog park, okay, where we're currently proposing to build two homes. That park had to be accessed via thirteenth street. So you had to walk up Lowry and then over to thirteenth and then into the park area.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Pearl.
Thank you. Yes, that answers my question. It's just kind of unusual for us to see neighborhoods where individuals walk on to a public street to get to access other parts of the neighborhood's amenities, but it's, I understand that was always, it sounds like that was always the intent if that was going to be a dog park that that everyone from that neighborhood would access it on, off of thirteenth. Was there going to be any parking on that site? And can you talk to us about where individuals will park at the new dog site? They have to be, they have to access the actual lot by foot, but is there a place for, for residents to park their vehicles?
Mr. Mayor. The original dog park had, had no parking other than on thirteenth street, okay? The new dog park, although we haven't specifically put in any parking, it is on a large cul-de-sac that goes nowhere. So there, there's, there's more parking there than, than there was on thirteenth street. And it's much easier to to access these parks via foot traffic than, than actually driving there.
Mr. Mayor, if Alan could go back to the other slide that showed both, I'm just kind of curious on how that, excuse me, is accessed. Excuse me. I'm assuming is there a pathway along the Creason lateral? Is that covered in where it matches the red area to the north? Northeast, the angled part is Creason lateral covered there? And then it opens back up or how do they? To Councilwoman Pearl's question, how, how, how do they access that? It's not real clear where that access point is.
Mr. Mayor. The plan that he, that is being shown by staff here is, is not the correct phase two plan. Tumble Creek and the other street that is being shown, which is Northwest Thirteenth, which actually isn't Northwest Thirteenth. There is a large cul-de-sac there now, okay? So there is a pathway on the north side of the Creason Creek lateral, and that has been paved. It's currently also being fenced with wrought iron fencing on both sides of the lateral. In fact, I was out there today and our crew was out there installing the, the fence. And where you have this, this turn to the north, that is where the cul-de-sac is and it well, it's actually a little further to the, to the east. And that's where the cul-de-sac is, and that is where the pedestrian bridge will be installed.
Mr. Mayor and
Councilman Hope.
Bob, thank you for that clarification. Yeah, what you're saying and what I was looking at just didn't seem to make sense. So that helps quite a bit to know where that cul-de-sac is, and that's where the crossing over the recent lateral will be, and it will be fenced and open. So, okay, appreciate that. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor.
Counselor Mr. Schrader.
Um, question for the city attorney, Bill Neri. There was a comment made that the gentleman who was speaking had an issue that the ditch that provided his water rights got taken out. Do you want to just give some context as to how he would resolve that?
So, Mr. Mayor, Mr. Council, Councilperson Schrader, yes. Idaho code requires that wherever the, the original source is that, that maintains. So if it's not, then that's an issue both with this developer as well as with the irrigation district. If his source of water has been cut off or diminished because of development, I don't know if that's true, but that's where the address would be because certainly the code does not allow it. Normally they're, they're piped and then they're, they may be moved sometime potentially, but that's usually a, a agreement with the property owners to where the source has to go. But yeah, certainly if there's an issue there, that's a conversation with both of Mr. Unger and the irrigation district.
Got it. Thank you. And so if, if there is a concern that, that his water rights have somehow been breached or removed or what have you, then would, would that, how would he resolve that? Would that be with the irrigation district? Would that be in the courts? Like, how would that get? Just for my own education.
Mr. Mayor, Mr. Councilperson Schrader, I mean, the first conversation you should have with Mr. Unger, if he's got an access issue that his access has been diminished or changed in any way by the development, probably that's the first conversation. Again, with the irrigation district, the irrigation district can enforce that as well. So if he had an access to water, then now no longer does the irrigation district will help enforce that as well to make sure his rights aren't cut off. So again, not knowing this, the situation on the ground. That's the two places he should start is a conversation with developer and the district. So again, not knowing this, the situation on the ground, that's the two places he should start is a conversation with developer and the district.
Please let.
Mr. Unger.
If I could clarify on that, please? We did discuss this with Napa Meridian Irrigation District when we were constructing phase one of the project and, and also putting in the original dog park. We were told by Napa Meridian that people were pumping out of the Creason lateral for irrigation, which was illegal as far as they were concerned. So consequently, Napa Meridian didn't require us to do anything to provide access for water for, for these folks because they were illegally pumping water from the ditch. Now, that's what we were told. Certainly, we can go back to Napa Meridian and clarify it. And if we need to do something, we'll do it.
Correct me if I'm wrong, I mean, ultimately, water rights is not our purview to make or not make decisions because it is a other, other party resolution through other means.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilwoman Schrader.
Thank you. Totally agree. It was just for educational purposes for me. And then I thought for the gentleman that had the concern, so he would know kind of where he could take that up. But I don't think that's a, a piece of our decision. But hopefully, being neighbors, you guys can chat and it's always better to resolve things personally. But whatever it is, it'll hopefully get worked out one way or another. Thanks.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Borden.
Question for legal to kind of frame the decision making. The final plat was approved in 2019 where a lot of the content of discussion would come. Now it's just a short plat for this lot. What discretion, if any, does council have to condition, approve, deny? Or these are extremely narrow scenarios.
Thank you, Mr. Member of the council, Councilboard. You're, you're exactly correct. I mean, it appears that everything was discussed in 2019. The, I'm looking at the original development agreement. I wanted to just verify that there wasn't any reason some additional notice should have provided. And, and look at the visual development agreement. If, if I'm looking and I'm, I'm a lawyer, not a planner. But if I take that dog park that was originally proposed and swap it with that three lots that are down below and connects it exactly to the original open space that was part of the DA, the numbers seem to align as to what was required by the DA. So no DA modification was necessary to notify about the change of the use at the time. So at this juncture, it is an entitled lot to build on. The only decision right for the council is whether or not the council's okay with them basically subdividing into two lots. And that's really the only decision point today. So the fact that it's a buildable lot has already been determined. It's just an issue is whether it should be two.
Councilman Borden.
Is there discretion, if any, to, it's a, it's a single buildable lot, but for the right to short platted into two and build two, does that come with the conditions potentially or is truly administrative?
Mr. Member of the council, Councilboard, and I mean, normally the, the plat conditions are already have been determined on the plat itself. So this is just really allowing them to be two lots instead of one. And then they would have to adhere to all the other plat conditions that already exist.
Council, any additional questions? Thank you, Bob. Don't go too far, but here, I'll go for now.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Cavanagh.
Question for Allen. What's the, the size of the lot when you factor in that easement piece? It has to be a, its own lot. Does that count as the point four? Or is it point four minus the amount that we have to cut out for the, for the easement?
It's point four minus. At the time that this came forward, they had the easement shown and they weren't aware that, that had to be a common law. That's a relatively new regulation.
Thank you.
Not relatively, it is a new regulation.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Hoagland.
Question, Allen. So what we're looking at here, two, two lots, 6516 and 7,090 for the buildable portion. And they meet all the setback requirements for, for the lots. They have a common drive that looks like the parking is doable. Staff had asked for that and to make sure that that was doable. So that appears to be doable as well. So it's, it's just difficult to see what, what issue there would be to not allow two, two, two lots to, to occur.
Correct. We, we requested this exhibit because it was a tight property and we weren't exactly sure how they were going to make it work, especially with the easement now having to become a common law. But they demonstrated to us that it will in fact work and actually he can get a house 1,800 square foot footprint-ish there.
Thank you.
Councilman Borden.
This question for Allen. Were there any conditions in the staff report that this discussion necessitates any change or update to, or those conditions in the report still remain part of the recommendation?
Yes, sir. I think the only significant one was that it had to, the common drive had to be on a lot versus an easement. It doesn't change anything if that's what you're asking.
Make sure that there's a condition of approval that, or a condition in the staff report that if we need to reference it in a motion or not.
No, it would, you would be, if, if you were inclined to approve this, you would be approving this with the conditions as listed in the staff report. I'm sorry, I didn't understand the question.
Councilman Borden.
There's no additional discussion from staff or the public. I'll make a motion that we close the public hearing for item 18 SHP 2021 0003.
Second motion.
Motion second to close the public hearing. Is there a discussion on the motion? If not, all favors seen by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed aye. Yes, have it in the public hearing is closed.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Borden.
This is, as I commented briefly, it's a very narrow application, narrow consideration. I think the adjacent property owner's concerns with regards to the change in property was a 2019 discussion that we had to consider when the final plat was modified. So this now is to allow two buildable lots. Councilman Hoagland, I think hit the nail on the head that the conditions in the staff report adequately permit the request. And I don't see any reason to deny it. I'm going to make a motion that we approve item 18 SHP 2021 0003 set forth in the staff report of, of August 24th, including the conditions set forth in that report.
Mr. Mayor, second motion.
I have a motion of second. Is there any discussion on the motion?
All right, hustle, call the roll.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Borden. Cavanagh. Pearl. Schrader.
Aye.
Hoagland. I've earned.
All eyes, motion carries and the item is agreed to. Thank you very much. Next item up is a public hearing for Horse Meadows MDA H 2021 dash 0050. Who will up in this public hearing with staff comments.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just sharing my screen real quick. Good to go. All right. The application before you tonight is for a development agreement modification. The subject property is 4.7 acres in size. It's currently zoned R4 and is located at 710 North Black Hat, which is the southeast corner of Black Hat and Pine. We discussed this multiple times at the end of last year. So I'm sure you remember it. The subject site was granted approval for a rezon and preliminary plat in late 2020. It was to rezone it to R8 and include a plat of 26 building lots. Existing access is actually on the south side from West Quarter Horse Lane. It also provides access for three parcels to the east and southeast. Tell them sure this access was removed. A DA provision was included that required all surveyant parcels to relinquish their rights to the private land easement prior to submitting for final plat approval. One of the surveyant sites has declined to, to relinquish their easement rights. And with the current DA language, the refusal of one of these easement holders to relinquish their rights functionally renders the property useless. Therefore, the applicant is requesting to modify the draft DA so that they may submit a signed DA and then officially rezone the property and continue plating it by submitting a final plat. And they will maintain the Quarter Horse Lane access for the one easement holder until such time that that property redevelops, which then we would have the opportunity to require that property to relinquish their rights to it. As part of this DA modification and request to amend the provisions, the concept plan for the green space area of Buddy and Black Hat must also be revised to show the travel lane remaining. In addition to restrict access to and from Black Hat, the applicant is proposing to install a gate approximately 100 feet into the site from the edge of pavement that will be accessed only by the city and the remaining easement holder. So it'll essentially be access for, emergency only access for the city and public works if they need to get to the site from there. Very unlikely. And then the easement holder that is not wanting to relinquish their rights. Staff does find that the requested changes to the concept plan are feasible and that the latest circumstances with the easement holder not relinquishing their rights makes it a feasible option to amend the DA and finds the proposal to gate the access to Black Hat and keep the traffic of only one rural residential home through this access as appropriate. Frankly, I believe that with the gate and maintaining the access, they'll still use the public road internally and they just don't want to relinquish their rights right now. That's where I think we're at at this point. There hasn't been no written testimony on this application. Therefore, staff does recommend approval of the DA modification.
Thank you. Council, any questions for staff?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Pearl.
Thank you, thank you, Joe. Just wanted to clarify a couple of things. So this is exclusive use and not ownership. Does that go away when that property is sold? Or is, or what are, what are the limitations to that? Is it exclusive use permanently? Or does, is there a, a limit on that once the property changes hands? Or the current owner is no longer the owner? And then also, how much does this affect that open space? And is that property still within it? Still within code? If I, if I remember right, this is, their open space was pretty substantial in comparison to what our code requirements were.
Councilwoman Pearl, great questions. First, you're referring to the surveyant site, right? The one that's not wanting to relinquish their rights?
Yes, I am.
Correct. Okay. So as, since they're in a county lot, if they were to request annexation and plat, we would require with that approval to say, hey, you don't need this access anymore. They also, that property, because it's the furthest one from the site, actually has a public street connection stub to their site, their east boundary anyways. So there's multiple ways for them to get in and out should that site redevelop, which then we would require them to close that access. This access or their rights to it. Secondly, this open space was in excess. It was extra open space. So removing frankly, 22 foot wide, which already exists as gravel, is, is going to make a minimal difference at all in any of the open space.
So how do we ensure this converts away from that roadway feature in the future? And, you know, Google Maps is going to show this as a road in. And that was kind of my other thing is like, why the gate at the back? As compared to more at the front? I mean, you don't want it too close to, you're blocking traffic, but just curious.
Mr. Mayor, the code would say the closest it can be is 50 feet. That's generally what we have for emergency vehicles, any of the emergency accesses. So if that's something that the council wants to do, to bring that a little closer to show that, hey, this isn't really a road and you're not going to be able to access the site, that I can understand that. I do believe that because it's a gravel road, people might assume it's going to be private. And then they're not going to want to try to access those 26 lots that way anyways. And they're going to have the access off of Pine, which is what ACHD required. Future, we have DA provisions in there that are proposed, some new ones as well as the existing that are going to say that basically as soon as it can be, this will just be closed off and be open space again. There's no timeline on that. Unfortunately, it's going to be heavily dependent on when the other site redevelops. If the dominos are falling.
I guess the question, how do we ensure that actually the gravel goes away and it goes back to what it was originally intended? Who's, who's going to make sure that occurs? Or is that not going to be in action if we move this? It's just going to be, sorry, you're going to have gravel in this place for the rest of eternity.
Great question, Mr. Mayor. I don't know how we specifically enforce it other than it is a DA provision, which is enforceable as we've discussed with other projects lately. But I'll leave the applicant to answer that a little bit more in depth for you and see if they have something else in mind to help us enforce that. Because I understand your point.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilwoman Schrader.
Just a question. Have we ever like escrowed or reserved for something like this? Is that how we would normally ensure that something happens? Or like, I know sometimes we bond for like landscape improvements, but that's kind of a different situation. Just wanted some context.
Councilwoman Schrader, good points. I don't think that we'd be able to bond for it. Usually this occurs on like a potential building lot. And that's why, how we can get them to do it, say, hey, this is a non-buildable lot until such time that you get this. This is not intended to be a buildable lot anyways. So that kind of takes that approach out of the equation. Unfortunately, I don't have a great answer for you on, on these questions.
Council Pearl.
Not a question, but a comment. So, and as most of you know, I lived right next to this for many years and frequently would see people try to drive down Quarter Horse Lane thinking that it was accessing property back there and it doesn't. So you see a lot of people pull in there and pull out and pull in there and pull out. So I agree with the idea of moving that fence further forward. I think that's, would be really wise. I don't, I don't know that we can require necessarily, but I think it's, would be a good idea to just make it even more clear that that's a private lane.
Council, any additional questions for staff at this time?
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Mayor.
Members of the council, I mean, since this is a DA modification, I mean, where the location of that gate is certainly is consideration the council can make. So on the other question, the future enforcement, again, it is a DA provision. So certainly when it, if it comes to the city's attention that, again, that property sold, that will come to our attention. That property wants to get, if it wants to be redeveloped, I guess, it could get sold as a house or remain a house. But if it wants to get redeveloped, that's something else. Certainly that access point will then trigger there, again, it will be a little clunky, right? It could be a number of years from now, you're going to be dealing with an HOA that now is going to require to move the fence and create a landscape portion in the, in the width of this, of this road. So it, it could be kind of clunky, but I don't have a better solution. I mean, otherwise you're simply, again, not to put words of Wisconsin type to his mouth, but you're going to let one property owner prevent the development of the entire parcel versus putting that burden on the future HOA by the development agreement that they'll have to do that. Certainly, it could go as far as the city having to sue them for, for performance to do it. But there may be other considerations at that time that the, that they may want. By adding this to their future open space, that may allow another buildable lot in the subdivision or some other use in the subdivision. So hard to know the future, but that's kind of where you'd be landing, so.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Pearl.
Um, I don't know if this question for staff or the applicant, since this has been owned by the development, is, are they responsible for maintaining this gravel road? Or is there going to be an agreement with the owner, the homeowner for maintenance?
Councilman Pearl, is my understanding that because of the easement, it's maintained by the easement holders? So that, that's the way that I read the easement, which is in the original file. I didn't have then a new file, but the original file that has the easement language in there. The applicant will be able to clarify that for you as well.
Councilwoman Schrader.
Mr. Mayor, yeah, a quick follow up there. So if the easement, I assume the easement sort of travels along legally with that property, right? So wouldn't, if that property redevelops and wouldn't, at that time, wouldn't they have the obligate? Couldn't we ask them to improve the? Couldn't we ask them to improve the gravel at that time then? Is that how that would work?
Councilman Schrader, I might default to Mr. Nary on that, but because it's an offsite, but it is part of their easement. So I could assume if we can require them to relinquish their rights to, we could probably require them to help assist in the cost of resanding it. I'm not sure if by then, maybe fire will want that additional emergency access. I don't know.
Yeah, I mean, the council, sorry. Again, a lot of great questions. I, I don't know the answers. I mean, definitely depending on what, if it is simply going to be redeveloped as a single house in the city. It may be difficult to have them do significant improvements. Again, as Joe said, there may be a desire at that point for still to have emergency access. And again, the council certainly has, has already made a determination once that without all of those properties relinquishing that access, the council wasn't willing to move forward. Again, Miss Constant Texas is asking you to reconsider that. Totally within your purview on whether to reconsider that original choice.
Thank you. With that, whilst applicant, please come forward.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Penelope Constantikis, representing the applicant. Office box 405, Boise, Idaho, 82701. On an amusing note, we have been on a long and torturous trail with this project. And so I'm glad that we're going to go out with a bang here maybe today. So as you know, three of the four, the easement holders were quite happy to sign the modification of the easement agreement. And we have one owner who is unwilling to do so. The stated rationale for that was it would be inconvenient to have a different access point. So, and we have that agreement ready to record with the three different signatures at this time. We do appreciate the city's patience and persistence in helping us work through this process. I've got lots of notes here, so I'll try and cover everything, but I would like to go over this image that you have on your screen now. So there's a little bit of discrepancy. I put in 22 feet wide. And the development agreement says 20, or the modification statement says 20 either one's fine. So that, that would be the area where the access would be retained for that final property owner. There would be a locking gate. The reason I set that back at 100 feet is because as a former transportation planner, I was concerned about vehicle stacking. So if the property owner is pulling a trailer with a car on it, he would have sufficient room to pull in and, and it would not block Black Cat Road. That's actually, if you were interested in going on a little side trip, if you turn in here and then turn around and come back out again, that's really a very hazardous intersection there. You have to be very alert. People are coming off the stop sign on the railroad tracks on the south side and they just goose their car. And so they're driving fast. There are some trees that obstruct the view. It's not a very safe intersection to begin with. So I was thinking that for safety reasons, we push that back as far as we could. We can certainly put a sign up that says residential entry or some kind of a sign that makes it obvious that that's just for one residence. And of course, the gate needs to lock. And we were excited that staff suggested this would be a good location for second access for fire, emergency services. And there will be a couple of manholes in here. So if the public works needs to run a back truck in there, they've got someplace to do it. Then the third item is this three foot open vision fence. And we'll put a pedestrian pass through on that so that people in the subdivision can get through the fence and use the asphalt pathway out to Black Cat. Consistent with Meridian code, we would put a four foot close vision fence along the north side of that easement for the new open space with the lattice if they want the additional two feet. But, and then just one other comment, part of the discussion with ACHD that happened off radar was that maybe not putting a sidewalk across that gravel access drive at this time would be a good idea. The gravel is just going to chew it up anyhow. So that would come later. So I'm going to try and answer your questions. I talked about where the, where we've decided would be a good place to put the gate. The easement right runs with land. It does not run with the owner in this instance. So if the property owner was to sell their property to someone else, that easement right would be retained. How to assure that it would be closed in the future? I, I would echo Joe's comment that they're more than likely going to be using our access out to Pine in fairly short order. And there's that tube that you can put across things with a counter. It's easy enough to verify whether or not the property owner is using it. Looking forward into ACHD's plans for expansion of Black Cat Road. I don't, I can't speak for ACHD and I understand that there, it's a little bit of a black box for them in terms of where their rights are, but I do think that the highway district has the right to close things if they're a safety hazard and there's an alternative access point. So I expect that when Black Cat is expanded and this subdivision, assuming that it's actually built out, that it will be closed through that process. That's the most likely one. And as Joe mentioned, this parcel back in the corner also has access to the subdivision to the west or to the east of them. So they're not technically landlocked now. Let's see, what else? In terms of restoring that area to open space in the future, it's about 2,000 square feet and it would be turf at this time. So we can certainly make it the responsibility of the HOA for Horse Meadows that they are in charge of restoring that area when it converts back to open space. I will say that the applicant went to an extraordinary level of effort to get this clarified and resolved, including offering financial incentives. And I know that representatives, the applicant went multiple times. I was there twice on two occasions with those meetings and it just, we just, we exhausted all of our options. The applicant rep did go back one last time and they asked him to leave the property. So he didn't even have a chance to any of the, the incentive. So we, we did work hard to try and get that resolved.
Uh, Councilmember.
I don't mean to interrupt, but if I'm remembering correctly, didn't you mention that this was already in agreement when you, when this application was first brought before us?
Well, we were under the understanding that all four owners were amenable.
Does that mean?
That they were willing to sign the easement modification. One of them just decided not to do it.
What you're saying is, is that after they just changed their minds? So you, you had, you had an agreement with, with this and then for some reason they backed out of the agreement?
It was verbal. We talked to everyone and Dan might be able to answer that question because I think.
And I don't, you, you'll get your time. Don't worry about your time. But I, I, I just find it hard to believe that we would have allowed this to happen under, you know, just the head nod and have, and, and shake. It feels like there's just a lot of, you know, potential problems with how this is working out.
I agree.
Mr. Mayor.
Can we?
I, I shouldn't have asked. I, I should have waited.
Let's let the applicant continue if we can.
No, I, I'm happy to defer the council.
And we'll go to council questions at this point in time? Say anything else?
Nope. I'm happy to answer any questions you would like to toss my way.
Councilman Pearl.
Thank you very much. If I understand correctly, that it, it was a condition for final plat approval that had to be met. So it wasn't so much that the city, I mean, it would have been great if you had, had been able to have that agreement signed before our city council hearing, but if I understand correctly, it was a conditional plat approval. So, so somewhere between the city council approval and final plat approval was where the, the neighbor elected not to continue. Is that right?
That's correct.
I know you can't speak for him, but, and I was kind of hoping that that individual would be here because I, I really like to hear any, just to understand if, if there's any really important reason why they want to retain access. I mean, that would have been really great to, to know. I'd also like to say, I, I've been doing this for a long time and I'm, I think it's really great, the effort that's been made here to, to make this work for, for the neighbor because it's, it's really hard to do. And usually you have property limitations that don't allow you to still develop the property and retain it, so.
Mr. Mayor, if, if I might comment on that. The only rationale that I heard was that it would be an inconvenience to drive by the new houses that would be in this subdivision as opposed to driving out on Black Cat or going out quarter horse lane. I didn't, there was nothing alarming or substantive or life safety, no critical comments. It just, just had to do with inconvenience and not wanting to drive by any houses. And I, I don't want to throw, I don't want to speak ill of the property owner. We did, we, we just tried everything. Guru Donuts is where we started. So we, we tried everything.
Yes, Joe.
I just, I will try to tread lightly and, but also be direct. I, I had a couple of conversations with that property owner and it seemed to be that frankly, they just felt bullied by development. Not, not the specific developer, but just in general that, hey, development is happening and it's taking away their road. So that, that's kind of the feeling that I got from them, which, which is unfortunate. But I do agree with Councilman Pearl that I haven't seen any applicants since I've been here that have pushed for some amicable remedy to the situation as I have Penelope and, and Dan.
Houseman Borden.
At that point, do you have this property owner's consent for the installation of a gate? Regardless of where it is.
Mayor, councilman, um, no. The last time that someone on the project team was on the property, he was ordered off. So we have no mechanisms for communicating with them. You know, gates are, if you live in an exclusive subdivision, you have a gate, you have to wait for it to open, whatever. But the only way we can preserve it for their exclusive use is to, is to put a gate in. Otherwise we'd have people driving out because it wouldn't be easy and they wouldn't want to use the public road. And again, I, I have been down that quarter horse lane and tried to exit it several times. It's very hazardous.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Borden.
That's an, that's an additional wrinkle that you're stuck with, I, is even if, if you were to get a condition today that modified it and included the installation of a gate somewhere that was locked or coded somehow. You, you don't have permission yet to modify the easement to do so yet.
Mr. Mayor, councilman, I think that the, we retained the services of a, an attorney shortly after the city council approval to draft the agreement. And the read that we got from council was that there's no prohibitive element. In other words, that it's not an unreasonable thing to do. And I would defer to Mr. Nary on that. It's not an unreasonable thing to do and it does not block them from using the easement. They have a gate and a key, so we're not taking their access away from them. Essentially, we're not doing anything other than adding a few minutes. And that's for safety reasons. So it's not done out of spite. It's done because we need to keep other people from using it.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Mayor, I was just thinking about that, where at some point in time, you get tired of people coming up there thinking it's, you know, going somewhere else and it doesn't. You, you know, is it the type of thing where you say, we're going to require this locked gate at, when they give permission? And then at that point, when they finally get tired of people coming up and down, then you get their permission to go forward and, and install the gate. I, I, I don't know if that's the, the solution here or not. I mean, to force that on someone who's already in that position of, don't tell me what to do with my access. You give them that, yes, you will provide the gate once they give permission. And there, there might be that point in time where they say, I'm tired of this, you know. Now it'd be your comments, your thoughts on that.
Oh, sure. Um, well, we're kind of caught in between the city and the property owner and the highway district. The highway district has been very clear about really not wanting that to be used as an access point. And if it's not gated, then it will become an available thoroughfare for anyone to use it. There are maybe some options for giving him, you know, a high tech gate. So he just pushes a button and the gate opens. So he doesn't have to get out of his vehicle. At which would minimize any inconvenience involved. And again, I would go back to my comment that there's no, there's no substantive reason to refuse. And I understand that he has the right to refuse. Absolutely. My guess is if we put one of those rubber tubes in a counter out there, he, he wouldn't use it for very long. And then he'd just start driving out, the much safer route to get to Black Cat Road, which would be out Pine Avenue. All valid concerns. I completely understand them. We'd like to move forward with the subdivision. The parcel to the south of us, not the one immediately adjacent to Black Cat Road where the old school is, but behind them, the Alexander parcel, they would also like to develop. And so, uh, you know, there's, it's not just hanging up this subdivision. It's also impeding another individual's right to develop as well. Within the extent of that being a right, I, I mean, I understand all those things. I think this is the only solution, really.
Mr. Nary.
I guess I, I am concerned only in one degree and Councilmember Wharton raised the, the point is currently the city's not a party to this easement at all. And so the city has no role. But what the applicant's asking is for the city to then now require a condition on their development to gate this easement. And now again, if it's not clear that, that limitation can be imposed on the easement holder, then that embroils us in the middle of that litigation. Because now we've required something that we or may not have had the ability to do. Is there any way to simply gate Horse Meadows, not the easement, but the Horse Meadows from accessing the easement? Because the concern is people using the easement to access into Horse Meadows. You can certainly put the gates on your property and have completely unfettered access. The other option, and again, I don't know what your conversations have been, have, have they considered just giving him the whole property? Just give it to him. Rather than buying it from him, give it to him. He can deal with it. He can deal with it for the future. Is that not a possibility?
Mayor, I'm going to, I'm not 100% sure. I understand your second comment. But the idea of putting a little jog in the fence so that the gate is actually in Horse Meadows as opposed to in the easement, that's absolutely an option.
That would have seemed to at least take the city out of, in an argument that we've interfered with the easement. And again, I was only thinking out loud on the other option, when you said you've tried to acquire the easement from the easement holder. I didn't know if you had had a conversation to just simply give him that parcel. But make it into a parcel and simply give it to that property owner and then. But ma- make it into a parcel and simply give it to that property owner and then Horse Meadows never has to deal with it.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, Joe.
This is, um, something that, to Mr. Neri's point, that we, one of, I don't know, the eight layouts that we discussed kind of did that, where you can see here is they would essentially lose lot eight and nine and push the road up and then leave the easement as its own lot. For whatever reason, that never got put forward, that was one of the potential options, but again, I, in the terms of what we're reviewing tonight, I don't know if with a DA modification, you can require that the plat be modified. I don't know about that's outside of my purview. But that would be what you would be essentially requiring because it's currently the easement is on this property and that's why they have some of the control here. Um, and the way that, to answer some of the other comments that have been made, the way that I read, again, I'm not a lawyer by any means and pay that much money. The easement is very broad in its language, very, very broad. And it doesn't really have any language to say what you can and can't do. It just says, don't take away the access. It's, it's honestly pretty much how I read it. And I believe Mr. Neri read that easement as well when we first started all this to help ensure that we were okay with developing the site at all when you have four surveying sites to an easement along the south boundary. I hope that helps the conversation.
Mr. Mayor, to clarify, certainly I wasn't suggested you had to go and offer the property to the greatest property. This is a solution, a not a viable solution. But certainly maintaining the limitation of access into Horse Meadows from that lane is more defendable to Horse Meadows as well as the city than it is the gate across this easement. I can foresee Walt, not Walt, with the Wind Gate Lane all over again. And we've had issues with Wind Gate Lane for a lo- a number of years that eventually went away. I could see us simply starting that conversation over. And if you can limit the access from, from this lane into Horse Meadows, I don't see the problem of, as we talked about, of people trying to go down it to get into their homes. They'll figure out pretty quickly they can't get into their homes that way.
Mr. Mayor, um, that, that would be fine. I, I don't, um, moving the gate and putting it on Horse Meadows instead. Part of the issue with just dedicating, creating a rectangular area and giving it to the property owner that doesn't want to participate is that it, it doesn't just impact Horse Meadows and it doesn't just impact the property owner who doesn't want to participate. It also impacts two other property owners in terms of, um, Mr. Morgan, who is directly to the east of us and one of the individuals that signed the easement modification. His, he does have access to Pine Avenue, but it's over a canal. And he's reliant on either getting down our new public road or through Quarter Horse Lane to get to his parcel with anything that weighs more than a bicycle. And then the other thing is that, that would truly curvall, that would truly, I would do the same thing right now. So, and the other thing is it would, um, it would landblock the Alexander piece. And so we're trying to be, we're, we're, we're trying to thread a fairly small needle and make sure that everyone is being treated fairly. So if we move the gate onto the subject site development as opposed to in the easement area. And, uh, and as Joe indicated, the, the content of the easement is a page and a half. It's very simplistic. There's nothing in there that would say that you can't put a gate in, we're preserving his access. And I think that's our obligation is to preserve his access and nothing more.
So correct me if I'm wrong, from what I, at least one of the things that was recommended as it comes to this. One of the solutions I heard was basically eliminate two parcels, move the road up. In that scenario, there is no gate. You're just essentially fencing off the property and there's no, or is there a gate someplace else that would still have to be installed for some reason?
Mr. Mayor, um, there would not need to be a gate if you just terminated Horse Meadows essentially by drawing the line on the north boundary of the easement area and just running it all the way across. I don't think the district would agree to that, ACHD. And again, we're, we're creating problems for two other of the property owners. We, we would be essentially land blocking out the Alexanders. They have a 30-foot strip that runs along the north side of the railroad tracks and connects to Black Cat Road, but the Purdum Drain sits in that 30-foot width. And so the only way to turn that into an access, which would only be wide enough for emergency to begin with, would be very expensive. Because the last time I talked to Namper Meridian about piping the Purdum Drain on a parcel on the other side of the railroad tracks, it's a 48-inch pipe and that's a deep drain. So, um, I understand the idea of just eliminating that easement area, making it go away. But there are consequences to, to other property owners. So at least in, that's the way I see it.
Maybe, what I was saying was you're not eliminating the easement, you leave the easement. I don't know where all the easement goes, I'm assuming it's on that bottom portion. You just don't impact the easement. You take the entire development outside of the easement and not address it in this application.
Mayor, the, the only problem with that is that it does still leave the Alexander parcel essentially undevelopable because you cannot develop and use an easement access for more than one household. So, um, or, or again, it's that needle thing. I got a little tiny needle in my magnifying glasses and I'm trying to find a way to get that, thread through that. So to just, um, I'm, I'm concerned about the consequences to the other two property owners by just eliminating any connection between Horse Meadows and the easement area. If we do that, um, then whether or not they're actionable inconveniences or not, we still are in essence rendering a parcel undevelopable.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilwoman Scherer.
A question for Mr. Neri, what you said just confused me a little bit. Uh, or maybe a question for the applicant and then maybe for Mr. Neri, but aren't you taking access for multiple households through the easement as well?
Mayor, Councilwoman, at the current time, there are four households. There are three households that use that easement area. There's no residence on the subject site. They've agreed to use this northern connection to Pine Avenue, which is the point of the, we're modifying the easement, we're only modifying it where it sits on the Horse Meadows parcel. The rest of it remains intact exactly the way it is now. So, um, that, does that answer your question?
I think so. I, I guess so. Just to get, let me dig into like a little bit, I'm just hoping Bill will help. So it, the solution of adding, eliminating two lots, not using the easement and using a gate. I guess when future properties develop, wouldn't ACHD have some, um, purview over that, right? Certainly if the easement holder's property develops, I would think at that time we would have some teeth to, to do, to require whatever we need to when the annex in the city, it's a question of order. Like the, the additional property is, you're saying this would make it undevelopable? Not really, yes, if it wanted to develop first, right?
Mayor, Councilwoman, actually, ACHD was very clear about this. They, they can't get involved in that at all. So if we did, for example, turn that into a rectangle and, and block it off from development of Horse Meadows, um, in the future, ACHD would not, they would have no grounds to do anything to that area. That's the, I mean, I had fairly extensive conversations with Christie Little about this and they, they flat out refused to get involved at all.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Pro.
Well, first to Councilman Scherer's question, it's hard to tell on this map because you're only seeing the platted area. That easement, the, the road, the, the dirt road goes back, what, at least double that length right there. That's the area that, where the other property owners to the south get cut off, right?
So are you talking about, excuse me, Mayor, Councilwoman, you're talking about what would be the southeast corner? Yes, yes. The, the easement will remain intact and untouched from that point forward. It, it's really an odd thing, the, the easement width is 50 feet where it touches Black Cat Road. By the time we get to the east property line in the southeast corner, only 25 feet of the easement sits on the surveying site. The rest of it resides on the Alexander parcel to the south of us. So the easement starts here and then it trends down and extends all the way to the parcel that's south and east of us.
Mayor, I have a follow-up question.
Councilman Pro.
So, um, at the point in time that, that, if actually, Joe, if you could bring that map up again. At, at the point in time in which that reverts back to open space, what was the plan for vehicle? Was there going to be bollards that were going to, is there going to be some sort of, um, blocking access from the road? Sorry, if you could bring up the plat with the green areas, the open space areas again? The, the full, the full, there you go. So what, what's going to prevent vehicles, yes, right, right where your mouse is? What's going to prevent vehicles from accessing the open space right there? That's the area where you wanted the gate to go, correct? Is right where his cursor is?
Yes.
And so is, could that gate be left then so that in the future, when it's still open space, that vehicles aren't accessing that open space? Or is there some way to do like a permanent solution that prohibits vehicles from accessing that without it having to be a gate?
Mayor, Councilwoman, those bollards would be a good choice, something that sits, um, in, um, whatever would satisfy the fire department, absolutely, it would need to be blocked. It would be easier for Public Works to drive down, if we could put in grasscrete. There's all kinds of things that could be done to obscure the pathway, the driveway through that. So it's not really visible, but it has the weight-bearing capacity to handle back trucks and fire truck if they need to get in that way. And using bollards, which is pretty standard. Uh, and, and actually I would think you'd want bollards on both ends of that, not just in the interior, but at both locations to prevent any unauthorized access through there.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Pro.
So the purpose, so was the request for the gate, that, the, um, is that a request made by the Casey's or is that something that the applicant is offering to them as, I guess I'm trying to understand like how the gate conversation started, if there's other potential options of keeping a vehicle out of that area, whether it's, whether it's the, the future residents of Horse Meadows, whether it's people coming off of Black Cat, whether it's somebody that's coming, uh, you know, in either direction. Is the, was the gate a concession that was?
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Mayor, Councilwoman, that, there's two different scenarios. We've got the long-term solution, which would be bollards. The short-term solution, uh, in order to preserve the parcel owner's access to Black Cat via the easement while preventing unauthorized people from using it to access Black Cat. That's where the gate idea came from. And again, we can put the gate anywhere. I just know that Mr. Casey is a, a fan of, I've been actually trying to avoid saying his name. The parcel owner does like to restore vehicles. So I, I envision that at some point in time, he'd be pulling a trailer with a, a vehicle on it. And we wanted to make sure, just for safety reasons, that that was set back far enough that whatever vehicle or whatever he was pulling could safely be off Black Cat Road before they had to stop.
Okay, before we, I'd like to see if there's any public testimony, just real quick, because otherwise I think we can probably go on all night asking questions. We do have two people in the room of, well, if you'd like to come forward and say your name and that, we don't have anybody online, so it's just those in the room.
This is Mr. Morgan, who's one of the, uh, easement holders that signed.
You say your name and address for the record, please.
Drew Morgan, address is 4600 West Quarter Horse Lane. I have the property immediately east of the development. My issue with what has just been talked about of, uh, cutting off access to Quarter Horse from the development is it forces us to continue to use Quarter Horse. Where this development solved a lot of our issues, because that is a real bad place to get out and I've been doing it for five years. And it's getting worse, especially since the, uh, school was put in. So now sometimes I'm at the end of Quarter Horse Lane and I have to put the nose of my pickup almost onto Black Cat in order to see. And then they're right racing off that stop sign. And when the schools, in fact, this morning it was worse than it's been in months. The people, they just don't stop, they don't stop at the railroad tracks, they slow and one after another. Like this morning, I just goose it out on the Quarter Horse in front of a car because I had opening from the other direction and forced him to slow down enough to let me out. So my issue is the one applicant who won't sign is forcing the rest of us to give up what we were offered. I don't know, I guess legally he has a right to do that, but, um, Mr. Casey told me he was signing. And he was willing, it was his wife that would not let him. Uh, so she's holding up the whole program, but, um, anyway, I am willing to cooperate any way I can. Uh, I have a big motor home, it's really tough to get in and out of there. And this would solve my problem. So anyway, I, I just wanted to say that about, I'm, I really don't like the idea of not letting me have access into, on, on the pine through these streets they're going to build.
Thank you, Councilman Holon. Question, Mr. Morgan, if you, I was just curious, you said that house, property to the east and there's, there's a couple of properties. Are you the one closest to Pine?
Yes, I have the seven acres right there where the cursor is.
Okay, and your, your property has that bridge?
I have a, I have a gate on to Pine, but the bridge, it can't hold my motor home. I already broke through it once, had to get a wrecker out to lift me off. And so I can still, it's, it's a lousy bridge. It's not, it's not safe for weight. And our gate on Pine, I do have to stick my vehicle out into the street to see what's coming. So it's not a very good access. But Quarter Horse has been our way in and out, but with the traffic. And when they do Black Cat in the next three or four years, whenever they do it, they're going to make that four lanes. The highway department's not going to want Quarter Horse used. It's not a good situation. So anyway, I would be a fan of any way possible getting Quarter Horse cut off as soon as, as you can. The gate would make him or her, I guess, more willing to use the paved road that's going to be there. And, and it wouldn't be very long before they, the sign on the corner that says Quarter Horse Lane belongs to the Casey's. They're the ones who put it there, so they, that's, you know, and they have the right to do that, but it's just really a pain for the rest of us.
Good, thank you. And we also would like to write testimony at this time on this item. Okay, then we'll invite the applicant back up for further, what I'm sure, questions and comments from council. But we'll start with your, any additional closing comments and then we'll move into more questions.
I, I don't have any more comments. I'm glad that Mr. Morgan came, um, uh, to add his, his, um, how it would affect him, that, that was helpful information that I hadn't, hadn't even occurred to me. That we would inadvertently be taking something away that would improve their lives and their safety. So I, I'm happy to answer any more questions that you have.
Council, additional questions?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilwoman Burt.
I, uh, I, 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 I'm looking at this application. What's being proposed this evening, in my opinion, isn't legal. Putting a gate there wouldn't be legal, um, because the gentleman's not. So what's being proposed this evening in front of me, I'm not in favor. I would suggest, and I'm one of six, I would suggest continuing this application for you to go and figure out either further discussion with the property owner who's not agreeable to the easement first. Or second, coming to us with, um, a solution to your problem that's legal. Instead of us having to make this decision for you on the dice this evening. I just don't think that's fair for us. That's not our purview. I think it's important for you to come to us and say, this is what I recommend. This is what we recommend, something that's legal, something that can be binding in the court of law. I just don't see that this evening. So I would recommend personally continuing this project for further discussion and solutions on your part.
Mr. Mayor, if I might, I don't know that there is another option. Um, they're, we can't even talk to them.
I, I was just one solution. And I'm, there's, there's many others that we've discussed this evening that can be put on paper and can be formalized. You know, I, I'm just not seeing a legal solution with, that's being presented this evening.
Mr. Mayor, could you maybe direct me as to which of the options that were discussed this evening that you find most palatable?
I mean, something that doesn't include the easement, because you don't have access to it.
I'm not sure I understand.
What I'm saying is, Mr. Mayor, do I have?
Yes, yeah, I'm just like, you go.
Okay, thank you, sir. I, I just, I don't think you're, I don't think that your solution, if you're saying that you're in a position where the one property owner is unwilling to even talk about relinquishing their easement. Then I think anything that you, uh, we've discussed tonight with regard to the easement, whether it's a gate, whatever, off the table. So either you need to close it off, either you need to put a gate, whatever the case may be. But I want to know what that looks like in writing, formalized and, and, and agreed to by Joe, um, by our staff before, before. I'm just, I'm one of six, I may, I may be the lone wolf, but that's just my opinion.
I, I'm just, I want to understand what you're saying. The, the reason I'm, I'm asking questions is because I want to understand. Um, so if I understand correctly, what you're saying is that you are looking for a document that, um, that's specify, I'm just, I'm a little lost. I, I apologize.
Can I, can I try? Sure, I'll try to, again, and I'm even worse than his lone wolf, because I don't.
I, I just, I want to keep deep diving until I really understand what.
I, I think it's removing the easement from the plat, from a design standpoint. You know, you, you can provide a gate on your property. So anybody further down Quarter Horse, Horse Lane can come right into the street that you do to go out to Pine. And there can be a gate that way, but just from a practical standpoint, having the easement as part of the plat or, or an easement.
That, that's very helpful.
Mr. Mayor.
What you're, what you're saying, go Joe, I'll wait.
Thank you. I just wanted to clarify, as I did earlier, that I don't know if it's through the DA mod or you would require additional applications. Can the plat that has not been recorded, can that be modified through the DA modification? I would, I don't know if we can require that.
Yeah, I'm, I'm not asking, I, from my standpoint as a non-voting member, don't care how you get there. If this needs to be desired, denied, withdrawn, redone as a overall application, that's, I'm just suggesting that the easement is a problem and how you find a solution.
Okay.
Is up to the process.
They, they own the property, they own the property. So what are they supposed to do with it? If they leave it out of a plat, it'll just be a.
The, the development portion of it, you don't have.
They own it. So what, is it supposed to just be like empty lot? I mean, the section, the section with the, that's the dirt road area that's, that's within their development, they own. And that individual has an easement to, to access across it, but they own it. So I don't understand how it's illegal if they put a gate on a property that they own.
So I, I guess, maybe to answer your question, what I heard and what I read and what I think Joe read is probably the worst thing from a legal standpoint is a very broadly worded vague document. And what you have here is a document that does not say, as you said, you can, doesn't say you can't put a gate on there. It also doesn't say you can, and that's my concern. So you can certainly put a gate on your own property that accesses into Horse Meadows. You can give Mr. Morgan access through that gate. You can prevent your other property owners from accessing that gate if you wish. And I'll, only Mr. Morgan to access to that gate, and that's perfectly fine. But I think what, what I was hearing is the concern is in putting that gate across that easement without the consent of the southeastern property owner that opens both Horse Meadows as well as the city to engage in litigation, determine if you can. And we don't know if you can or not. So what you're, where we started was no final plat until everybody agrees. Now you're asking us to modify that, to allow it to only be two people in agreement, but without the third one even agreeing to the solution you're proposing. And that's what I think Councilmember Burt's saying is, the third, the other party is not agreeing to even the solution. So therefore, again, we're going to order a gate to be placed on that property. That person's going to come to the city and say, you now are preventing my access, not just Horse Meadows, but the city. So without their consent, which is, I think, what House of Burt's asking is, could you get their consent? You know, could you, could your, could your developer and Mr. Morgan have a conversation with the neighbor on at least consenting to the gate access? Again, he may be not willing and that's his right. But I think what, what I'm hearing from the council is the apprehension of involving us into that. So again, if you put all the gates on Horse Meadows and the only person allowed through that gate is Mr. Morgan, now that property owner, that's certainly within your purview, you can certainly do that. And then that affects nothing with the adjacent property owner. He can come in and out and continue to use the same, no changes for him, no reason to litigate.
Mayor, Council, I just want to make sure I'm really clear. Mr. Morgan is, um, amenable to the easement modification. It's Mr. Casey and Miss, Mrs. Casey who have, uh, declined to participate. Just want to make sure that's real clear.
I understood that.
Yeah. Um, so if I'm understanding you correctly, you're asking for two things. You're asking for the gate to be located on, on the area that will become Horse Meadows subdivision. And that we obtained somehow, uh, permission from the Casey's to put a gate across there. Am I understanding this correctly?
No. Mr. Mayor, Mayor of the Council, what I'm saying is if you put the gate on Horse Meadows property, you don't need Mr. Casey's permission. If you do want to put it across the, the easement, you will need their permission. So it's either get their permission to put the gate across Quarter Horse Lane or only put the gates on the Horse Meadows property and grant access to Mr. Morgan's property if you wish. And then he can have the access out to Pine as he's asking. So that, that was what I was suggesting, again, whatever the council wants is their, their call.
Mayor, uh, Mr. Neri, I understand what you're saying now, but we're more than happy to shift that. Um, I, you know, I, I've never had a situation like this. I just took the snapshot of the plat and went for it. So it wasn't, um, I, I gave it my best effort and a little bit of fine tuning is fine. So we'll just shift the gate into Horse Meadows and, um, and as you suggest, we can, we'd be happy to do that.
Well, and that's, yeah, it says it's for, for that, I mean, I don't know how you can shift this in without re-drying the plat and moving the roads and moving parcels to accommodate that. Just unless council thinks otherwise, I want to, this is a bigger issue than. So maybe we should go back to the conversation of continuing this public hearing, allow staff to work with the applicant. And if they can't get that, then we come back and withdraw this entire application for a different approach, if that's what is needed.
Mr. Mayor, let me understand. If, if, if there was never a gate shown, I mean, the gate, it was on, on this drawing is shown here as a, it's not really part of the application. It's just, hey, this is what we're going to do as a concession. If that gate wasn't on there, uh, that wasn't, that's not something that's a condition of this application, right? Like, we're not conditioning that, okay? So if the gate wasn't on there and there was not a gate conversation being had during this hearing, um, and, and they chose to put the gate on their property after the hearing, is that, then the city's not culpable anymore? I'm, come, come, help me understand further the city's culpability in, if they put their gate on their private property and they give access to Mr. Casey, I don't understand how the city is culpable, because the gate, the gate is not part of the, the application, is it?
Mr. Mayor, who's the council, and then maybe Joe could help me here, but the Quarter Horse Lane, the attempt was to limit the access to Quarter Horse Lane to only the property owners that were there. And that the other property owners in Horse Meadows aren't going to access into Horse Meadows through that. That was what the gates were for. The desire, but the direction from the city council was all three of those adjacent property owners needed to consent to relinquish that easement before we would bring forward a final plat. That, that didn't happen. So now we're back with, where, where does Quarter Horse Lane land? Where do these access points into Quarter, or into the Quarter Horse, or the, the, this particular development end up? And that's kind of where we are. It's crossing that easement that now limits the access. Right now, where this gate was, I don't know was going to limit the Casey's, but if it is going to limit their access, that's a concern. Cause now we will have ordered it. That's what they're asking for in this application, to us to order a gate to be there, to then only allow the Casey's to use of it. Everyone else has to go through, go through Horse Meadows.
Without limiting, ACHD.
Right.
Does not approve of this process.
Right.
But again, I don't even know how much, do we care? Curious right now, I'm, I'm, okay, we do, just wanted to make, make sure, okay.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Burt.
I think the idea of a continuance is you're willing to, to give it a shot.
As long as it's not on September 9th, because I have a whole different hornet's nest. I need to deal with a different agency, so I need to.
Thursday, so it wouldn't be that.
Yeah.
I have the date for you.
And here's the reason, I think, the way I see it is that working backwards, it would never have been annexed. We would have had the comment at that hearing that says, it's just not ready. This is such a fundamental piece. It's why the condition was in the DA prior to the final plat. It's just a fundamental part of this application being successful. You've done excellent work trying to craft a solution. It's going to take a little more time, if there's a solution at all, that, in the mayor's point, that might be the only option is to redesign the plat with a different application that, that doesn't have this easement as part of it. I don't know if that's the case, but you getting, I don't know what, council president has 30 days or something to noodle some alternative suggestions, because the one today doesn't.
I'll get my crystal ball out.
Mr. Mayor.
My magic wand.
Penelope, how does September 28th work for you?
I'm sure it's just fine. I don't, I don't have my calendar right here with me, but I'm sure it's fine.
Do you want to, do you want to verify? It works for me.
Thanks, Joe.
I'm just an employee, you know?
28th would be fine.
Any other closing comments, Penelope, before we continue the public hearing? Okay. Mr. Mayor.
Councilwoman Burt.
I move that we continue this item, which is item, uh, 19, which is H dash 2021 dash 00502, September 28th.
Second motion.
A motion, a second to continue the side until September 28th, is there any discussion? If not, on favor, signature by vice, say nay.
I.
Opposed, nay. You guys have it and the item is continued. Council, move on, just wrap this up this evening before we take a break. So move on to item 20, ordinance number 21 dash 1940. Ask the clerk to read this ordinance by title.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. An ordinance amending Meridian City Code, Section 152, relating to the official newspaper of the city of Meridian, providing a savings clause and providing an effective date.
You've heard this ordinance read by title, is there anybody who would like it read in its entirety?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilwoman Pearl.
Uh, I'm not requesting that it be read in its entirety, but it, would it be possible for us to have Mr. Neri explain the move from Meridian Press to Idaho Press?
Mr. Mayor, who's the council, I certainly can, and, and, and Mr. Johnson can probably supplement that as well. We've had a few issues on publication with Meridian Press, because it's weekly. So we have looked into that and have to cure occasionally, if there is a printing issue, it's then another week, which can delay development agreements, annexations and other things. So the city has to have an official newspaper by code. It has to be, and there's other particular specifics about it that have to meet that criteria. One criteria that trumps most other things is that it's printed within the city, printed within the county or printed within the state. To be honest, in the research, both at my office and Mr. Johnson's office has done, it is absolutely unclear to me where the Idaho station prints the paper. I have no idea where they print it, but it appears that from all intents that we can find, the Idaho Press is printed either in Kuna or in Napa, but it is printed here. So we, we had talked about it internally, talked about it with the council president, the mayor, felt that if we moved to the Idaho Press, because it's a daily, well, six days a week, that it is a better opportunity if an error occurs or something needs to be done quickly. We have occasions where we've passed an ordinance on a Tuesday and waiting 10 full days is a long time for something we would like to have implemented sooner. So this gives the city a little more options and still is compliant with the state code. If I missed anything, surely Mr. Johnson's done a lot of research on this as well.
Well, with that, do I have a motion?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilwoman Pearl.
I move that we approve ordinance number 211940. Second, the motion.
I have a motion, a second to approve ordinance number 211940, is there any discussion? If not, on favor, signature by, by saying nay. I opposed, nay, and I have it and the item is agreed to. Next up is order, news number 21 dash 1941, that's the clerk to read this ordinance by title.
Thank you, Ms. Maritz. Ordinance related to H 2020 0113 Fox cross, Foxcroft subdivision for annexation of a parcel of a land, parcel of land located in the southwest one quarter of the northeast one quarter and north one half of the southeast one quarter of Section 10 Township 3 North, Range 1 West, Ada County, Idaho. And being more particularly described in attachment A and annexing certain lands and territories situated in Ada County, Idaho and adjacent contiguous to the corporate limits of the city of Meridian as requested by the city of Meridian, establishing and determining the land use zoning classification of 24.567 acres of land from RUT to R8, medium density residential, zoning district, number 80 city code, providing the copies of this ordinance shall be filed with Ada County assessor, the Ada County recorder and the Idaho State Tax Commission as required by law and providing for a summary of the ordinance and providing for a waiver of the reading rules and providing an effective date.
Thank you, Ms. Quirk. Council, you've heard this ordinance read by title and is there anybody that would like it read in its entirety? Looking at you, Ralph. If not, do I have a motion?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilwoman Pearl.
I move that we approve ordinance number 211941 with a suspension of rules.
Second, the motion.
A motion, a second to approve the item and the suspension of the rules, is there any discussion? If not, all favor, signature by. If not, all favor, signify by saying nay.
Aye.
Oppose, nay, the ayes have it. Final item of the evening is orders number twenty-one dash nineteen forty-two, ask the clerk to read this ordinance by title.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, it's an ordinance related to H twenty, twenty-one, zero, zero, two, one, prevail north subdivision for annexation of a portion, portion of government lot one of section thirty-one, township three, north, range one, east, Boise, Meridian, Ada County, Idaho, as described in attachment A, and annexing certain lands and territories situated in Ada County, Idaho and adjacent contiguous to the corporate limits of the city of Meridian as requested by the city of Meridian. Establishing and determining the land use zoning classification of five point six, three acres of land from RUT to R eight, median density residential zoning district in the Meridian City Code, providing the copies of this ordinance shall be filed with Ada County Assessor, the Ada County Recorder and the Idaho State Tax Commission as required by law and providing for a summary of the ordinance, providing for a waiver of the reading rules and providing an effective date.
Thank you, council, you prefer this ordinance read by title, is anyone like it read in its entirety? If not, do a motion.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Pearl.
I move that we approve ordinance number two, one, one, nine, four, two, with a suspension of rules.
I have a motion, a second to approve the item under suspension of the rules, is there any discussion? If not, all in favor, signify by saying nay.
Aye.
Aye.
Oppose, nay, the ayes have it, the items agree to. Council, anything under future meeting topics? And do I have a motion to adjourn?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember.
I move that we adjourn.
Second motion. Motion, a second to adjourn, all in favor, signify by saying nay.
Aye.
Oppose, nay, the ayes have it.